Could we have the roll call, please, Mr. Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, and welcome back, everybody. Mayor Sticks.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang is absent. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the August 27th, 2024 meeting of the Ojai City Council. Would you please say the pledge for us, Weston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Welcome, community, please rise as you are able. Our flag is in the back of the room here, which we are facing.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. City Attorney, anything to report out from our closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session regarding two items. One, anticipated litigation related to a written communication threatening litigation from Sarah Gorgensen on behalf of the California Restaurant Association and Council Labor Negotiators regarding all underrepresented employees. No reportable action taken on either. Stay tuned for the next council meeting for an item on the reach codes issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. City Manager, anything to comment upon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under the absences section of your agenda, I want to point out that Councilmember Lang is not with us physically this evening. She's going to be with us via Zoom, albeit not participating as a voting member. That is not the council member's fault. Staff neglected to get her address from her when she was traveling, so we were unable to post the agenda properly to allow her to participate. So she is going to be here, but just not able to vote. And again, that's on staff, not on the council member.
And she will be able to make comments, though?
She will, just like anybody else. She can make a comment on every single item on the agenda if she so desires.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we will move on to approval of the agenda, and I'm going to make a motion to pull items four and six. Item four is the City of Ojai Traffic Motor Officer, and six is the general plan contract modification.
Mayor, pardon me, I believe, pull?
Pull from this.
Oh, continue.
Yeah, continue, sorry. Continue, thank you. Because we have a very stacked agenda, as we all know, and just was very ambitious, so I think I'm making a motion to wait on those.
And we can do that, sorry, I'll jump in really quick. We can take, bring those at your next meeting if the mayor and council so desire.
Okay, which is September 9th.
Correct.
Can you say the numbers again?
Four and six.
Number four and six, okay.
And I'd like to amend or propose an amendment to that and include eight in that because that's the identification of voter members for the Cal Cities, League of California Cities Conference, and I think Rachel should be a participant when we come down to selecting who may be voting members.
Okay, item seven, so it's four, six, and seven, I think.
It says eight on the.
Okay, never mind, okay. All right, is there a second?
There's no problem time-wise or nothing, okay.
Mr. Mayor, no, none of these issues are time-sensitive, and if the council so pleases, it's totally fine.
Okay, no, that's great.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, so the agenda is approved, and we will move on to commission reports. We have a report from Arts Commissioner David Leeds, and I would just like to thank David for providing this beautiful art for us. You know, it's just stunning, so thank you so much. It makes such a difference.
You're very welcome. And on behalf of the Arts Commission and Chairman West, I do want to thank Mayor Sticks for her vision that art really is an essential part of community wellness. Our goal here was not just to make Kent Hall a warmer and more friendly environment, but really to show how interacting with art can open your eye, not just your eyes, but your mind and your heart in a way that leads to deeper kind of thinking and a deeper state of emotional awareness. And we hope that both the council and the community at large can take part in that, and it will provide some positive things for everyone. I just want to thank briefly your incredible staff. This city has just the best working staff I've ever seen. They were so responsive, helpful, and efficient. Weston Montgomery, James Renger, James Hahn, and especially Will Petter. Without Will, it's constant perseverance and good cheer, this would never have happened. So thank you all, and thank you for this opportunity to help move the city forward on the arts front.
Thank you, David. And please, everybody, take a moment to look around and enjoy the beautiful art. We're lucky. Okay, all right, we will move on to presentation. We have certificate of appreciation to the city's homeless services coordinator, Rick Rain, for his outstanding achievements and service to the city of Ojai. So I'm going to go ahead and read the certificate. Certificate of appreciation. Whereas, Rick Rain has served the city of Ojai as a leader in the effort to support the unhoused community. First, in an emergency capacity as an administrative analyst, and later as the city's homeless services coordinator. And whereas, Rick led the city's successful effort to bring campers out of the oak woodland and creek areas of the city hall campus and into the greater Kent Hall parking lot area. And whereas, Rick's efforts to bring the campers into the greater Kent Hall parking lot area and put a boundary around the encampment led to the establishment of a safer, more sanitary, and community-oriented encampment. And whereas, Rick successfully led the effort to mobilize volunteer efforts and construct eighteen temporary tent shelters and storage spaces for the unhoused living in the greater Kent Hall parking lot area. And whereas, Rick played an integral part in supporting day-to-day operations and community affairs while the city continues on its path to a long-term solution for the unhoused community through its Cabin Village project. And whereas, Rick has been a reliable and valued team member with the city, engaging with community groups and government agencies to advocate and provide for the unhoused and communicate the good work the city is engaging in. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Betsy Sticks, Mayor of the City of Ojai, on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do hereby thank Rick Rain for his outstanding achievements and service to the city of Ojai. And I just want to tell, just say from the bottom of my heart, we have been so lucky to have Rick help us, and you've done so much, and your expertise and your just unbounding dedication to service and helping people is really incredible and so admirable, so thank you so much. And we have a special gift for you. Can you turn around so we can see it, too?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, staff. When I started this way back in October, Weston, when he swerved, finished wearing me in, my first comment to him was that it was an honor and a privilege to being able to serve the city of Ojai. And through all these months, despite all of the ups and downs that we might have had, the successes, the failures, I still felt that way. And I'm so honored to have been part of working with so many people who are so dedicated to helping the least fortunate friends of mine, people who have lived up the street from me and find themselves in a very difficult situation, and many of them in their senior years. So where we are today, I still feel very much the same way, but a little bit more where it was been an honor and a privilege to be part of this, but also for me personally, a very, very wonderful blessing. And thank you very much for having given me the opportunity.
Okay, all right, we will move on to general public communication. And just a reminder to everyone, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. But we appreciate your viewpoints, and we can agendize them for the future. So we'll begin with Brian Akins, then Dave Monson, and then Renee Roth.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brian Akins. I am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I appreciate being in here. Just real quickly, I expected to be up here about 1:30 in the morning talking about discussion item number seven. I'm happy that that didn't work out. Friday, I learned some information, which I hadn't, that involved discussion item number seven. I want to thank our city manager, Harvey, who took the shoehorned me in on a very, very busy schedule to, so I could share with him just my concerns. He listened to me attentively and asked some good questions for background. I shared those with him and made the suggestion that, in the interest of fairness, which I thought was very fair, that this item be postponed until a date certain so that I could go back to the HPC in the next meeting and discuss the item that was mentioned in the package. And again, I appreciate City Manager Harvey working with me. I know you're Friday afternoon. So thank you for that. I do, I do, while I'm up here, is I want to, at the request of our commissioners, and this is in the agenda, I would like to invite our city attorney, Matt Summers, our city manager, Ben Harvey, our community development director, Lucas Seibert, and our mayor. I don't need to invite our mayor because she's our liaison coming up, but we always, we always love having you there. And the reason why is we just like to have a clear understanding of working together with the staff and staff time being available. Here's an example, and I have this example. Similar thing happened two years ago, September 2022. This is a document that we put together. It's a one-pager that talks about the structures of merit. This would, may have been included, would have been included in your package. It was something that was very carefully done by our commissioner, who's paid attention. And at the very bottom of it, it has in bold red, you can see this document was not prepared, reviewed, or approved by the city staff or the city attorney. That kind of is a bit of a big downer when, you know, that is presented to a document that we've worked carefully on. So something that we'd like to discuss and understand better. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Dave Monson, then Renee Roth, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, council members and city staff. I'm Dave Monson, Principal of Nordhoff Junior High and High School on Maricopa Highway. I recently met with members of your staff and members of the construction crew regarding the ATP project. During our meeting, it was revealed that our current parking on the south side of Maricopa Highway will be removed and placed on the north side of the highway. I have concerns with this design. Currently, many parents and family members use the parking on the south side of Maricopa Highway to drop off and pick up their children. Even though students still have to cross the newly created bike path between the highway parking and the curb, it is still safer to drop off and pick up on the south side, closest to our campus, rather on the north side of Maricopa Highway. This project is marketed as a way to increase safety for pedestrians, but this decision does not accomplish that for our students and families who use the south side highway parking. The decision to move the parking spots to the north side of Maricopa Highway will make it more dangerous for our students as more will have to cross the highway to get to classes each day, increasing the chances a student will be struck by a vehicle. Since Maricopa Highway was reduced to one lane in each direction, I and members of my administrative team have witnessed vehicles illegally passing, stop vehicles waiting to turn left into our parking lot. I encourage you to review and reconsider the design that moves parking for students and families from the south side of Maricopa Highway to across the highway on the north side. If your goal is to increase safety for pedestrians, please keep the parking spaces on the school side of the highway. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. And we appreciate your enthusiasm. If you all, if you could all hold your claps, though, and we'll move on to Renee Roth.
Good evening, members of the council. And that was a great break. I hope you're all back and ready to go. It was nice to be able to have some time off. I hope you all had a great vacation. And Ben Harvey, you have been busy. There were so many things on that consent item. I can see why you needed them to be gone so you could get some stuff done. Way to go. There's a lot of things that you got done, and it just went flying through. So congratulations, way to go. You also managed to get out a city newsletter. And I know there were several people who were really happy to see an update and some information on progress and things the city is, has in the works. And it would be nice if we could have something like that on a regular basis, just a little kickback to the community from Mr. City Manager about what you're doing, because I thought it was great, and I know a lot of people really liked it. One of my questions is, I know the pickleball project is moving along, and it'd be nice to hear, like, what's happening and when that might be going online out at Soul Park. The other thing I wanted to mention is the letters, the comments that were in, sent into the city council regarding the planning for item number two that's coming up. I want to congratulate Leanna McNeely. Are you, are you in the audience?
No, she's home.
She's home, okay. All right. Well, there was a great article.
She's watching, she's watching.
What?
She's watching.
Oh, she's watching.
Yeah.
Leanna. I hope that's the way you say it. That was a great article and an update about what is happening with the project on City Hall. I have to say, it has a totally different feel about it as I walked onto the campus tonight. It felt like a city street and a neighborhood where people were out and about and walking and engaging and having a good time. So anyway, that was really great to see. I have high hopes for item number two that's coming up on the agenda. The other thing I'd like to see, since we're not going to be talking about it, is the tourism and climate action plan that you are expected to be taking action on. I would like to see you talk about economic development and economic development options that might help us not be so reliant on tourism to meet.
Thank you, Renee. And, Mr. City Manager, just to clarify, we do plan to put those newsletters out periodically.
Yes, not just periodically, quarterly, but we can also explore, we've heard this from a few folks, more frequent types of communication outside of our social media posts, which go out weekly.
Thank you very much. Great work, appreciate it. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Ryan Blatts, and then Star Child Wavoda.
Good evening, Larry Steingold. Welcome back. Mr. Harvey, welcome to Ojai, again and again. The one thing that ties the city together right now is fire. I have spent $1,600 to cut down some branches that were approved, licensed, certified, and permitted. There's nothing in this agenda tonight that talks about fire. We're all tied together. Fire is going to make the city more unaffordable for people. Insurances will be passed through to rents. They will increase the costs of homes. Whether it's change the gates or cut the trees or turn our neighborhoods into Arizona, where there's nothing around the homes, I would hope that the city would lean into us and help us. And no one's asking you for money, though maybe it would help if you funded fire-wise or all these things, because it affects everybody. Or take some budget from the emergency climate action budget and help people trim trees so there's no fires, so there's no more greenhouse gases. So we can justify helping people who cannot afford, because there's a lot of dead trees hanging on people's homes here, and these people cannot afford to trim and pay the $395 to Bill and $225 to the city and $900 and change to Oscar. That's great, okay? And I'm still guaranteed that my insurance will not necessarily go down. So I can spend all the money in the world, and I'm still going to pay $6,000, $7,000 a year in tax, in insurance. It was $1,500. And all I've got is, you know, we're fine. But there, I mean, this is going to be very painful. And it would just help if the city helped, whether it's get rid of the fees for one year for cutting down tree, for tree trimming for fire, just waive the fees for one year. Take a change, some things to make it easier for people to get this stuff done. We're all tied together here. It's just making it more unaffordable. Just try to make it a little less unaffordable. So please, try to help us with the trees. Just make it easier, less aggravation. And the city, quite honestly, was very good about getting me my permit. It took two days once I got everything done, and that's great. Okay, but again, the costs have got to be helped here. So thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Ryan Blatts, then Star Child, and then Debbie Rubenstein.
Thank you, council. Ryan Blatts, citizen of the city of Ojai. It's great to see some of my colleagues up here tonight, and it's just good to see you guys. It's been a while. I've been working, and I had a great meeting this morning with Susa Francina and Ben Harvey regarding the Libby Bowl contract and the negotiations that had broken down with Sterling Ventures. Once I heard about this last week, I've been working really hard, talking to everybody and figuring out what the situation was, what was going on. And I've been able to talk to almost all of the committee members who were originally involved in negotiating the original contract, which my father was also a member of that committee, and as well as a number of experts in the field. And they were all unanimous in saying they really believe that the contract we have and our partner has been a great partner for us at the Bowl. In our conversations this morning, Mr. Harvey indicated that if Sterling wanted to continue negotiation and discussion, that it would be worthwhile to have a counteroffer. So I've been able to procure that from them. I'm not representing anyone in this, I'm just a concerned citizen, but a lot of the people in the public have been very concerned about their interest in our Libby Bowl. And knowing how difficult and all the time and different gyrations that went into getting an agreement in the first place, thought it was important that we just made sure everybody understood what the history was and all the different things that went into that original agreement. So luckily, they've been willing to make a counteroffer that I think is very, you know, is not significantly different than the current contract. And I'm hopeful that the city council can review it. And if they can get into negotiations and discussions regarding it, I'm very hopeful that maybe the RFP process isn't necessary so that we don't risk losing what has been a really good partner and a entity that, according to everyone I've spoken to, is really the best situated and maybe the only option that can really do the job that has brought all of the wonderfulness to the Bowl. It was a difficult time after the original. When the Bowl was originally redone, as many people know, it wasn't just tax dollars, it was a lot of effort and money from our citizens that donated to it. And it took a while to get things started. So people are concerned about there being a, you know, they don't want the Bowl dark, they want to continue enjoying it. And this is a step that I hope is in the right direction to get the city and Sterling to continue communications. I have been in contact with them. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has. Obviously, you can't tonight, but I hope that soon as possible the city can agendize an item and open discussions on this and hopefully get something approved. I'm going to go ahead and provide this to Weston, and you're all welcome to review it. And if there's any follow-up, you all know how to get ahold of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we have Star Child, then Debbie Rubenstein, and then Michelle Panero.
Hello, good evening. I want to say ditto to what the Principal of Nordhoff said about the importance of having parking that students can use that doesn't force them to cross a busy highway and allows them to avoid potentially being hit. Today, I wanted to come to talk about housing. I got the Ojai in sight, just like many of my neighbors. And there was one article there that talked about how the city of Ojai has achieved its Rena numbers, which is a great accomplishment that I think we should all celebrate. But I also don't think we should stop there. We know that we need more housing in this city. One of the ways that we can figure that out is by asking, well, can our children afford to live here? Could our staff, our city staff, afford to live here? Can the trolley drivers afford to live here? Can our teachers, our baristas? If our house were to catch fire, could we afford to buy a new one here in Ojai? And I think if the answer is no to those questions, then you yourself know that there's not enough housing available. The city can do a lot to make the more housing possible. It could support any developers who want to bring projects, especially if they're bringing some low-income or subsidized housing to the mix. It could support people who want to add ADUs, which it does pretty well, but also support people who want to have SB9 split. Maybe instead of a million-dollar house, there could be two $500,000 houses and a lot. And so I just came here to say that I think that there's a lot the city can still do, and I hope we don't stop trying to get more affordable housing here so all our residents who want to live here can live here, and all the people who work here can live here and work here, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Star Child. Next, we have Debbie Rubenstein, then Michelle Panero, and then Karina Wright. Oh, okay, great. Okay, next, we have Michelle Panero, and then Karina Wright, and then Lila Francesca.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks, Mayor Pro Tem Francina, and Councilmembers Whitman and Rule. My name is Michelle Panero, and I am so excited and honored to be here tonight to announce my candidacy for mayor of Ojai. Now, I don't want to bore anyone with my resume. I'll post my professional experience on the website. What I want to share with you all tonight is who I am and what I stand for. Ojai is my forever home. It is where my husband and I are raising our young daughter and sending her to school. It is where I have made many dear friends. I love our small town, and I'm running because I want to help make the lives of the people who live and work here the best that they can be. There are some people who stand to make a lot of money off of our town, but Ojai isn't a business venture. It is a community with soul, and a vote for me is a vote to protect that soul, to keep our neighborhoods from turning into a ghost town of second homes and to ensure our local businesses thrive. It's a vote to get things done that will improve our daily lives, like fixing our roads in a timely way and managing our tourism so that the people who visit and enjoy our town enjoy it the way we do, with respect. A vote for me will be a vote to ensure that your leadership is prioritizing housing for low-income earners and retirees. Supporting me means supporting measured and effective solutions when it comes to addressing the unhoused and making sure we look through the lens of climate change when we make any decision to ensure our long-term health, safety, and quality of life. I am qualified for this job. I have the skills and the heart, and I promise to be a leader who listens, who is pragmatic, who is accountable to the community, and who brings transparency, empathy, and humility to every decision. I hope that anyone that is inspired tonight will join me. My website is Michelleforojai.com. anyone that is inspired tonight will join me. My website is MichelleForOjai.com, and it will be fully launching next week. And if you can, please join me for a meet and greet this Thursday, August 29, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Grab a coffee at Java &amp; Joe and meet me in the grassy courtyard behind the arcade. I look forward to meeting with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, this is the Mayor Protem now.
Oh.
It's a rotating position.
Ah, yes. My mistake. Thank you for that. Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Karina Wright, and then Lila.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for your service. You probably received my written comment, but that motorcycle officer agenda item has been moved. But I would just like to say that I'm very disappointed and concerned that my council member, Rachel Lang, is not able to participate tonight. And I'm quite astounded that we would go forward with such important agenda items, especially these very large budget items, cabin village items, et cetera, without representation from my district. And I would like to know how something like this would happen. I know that Rachel is extremely responsible. She would never have put herself in the position where she would not be able to weigh in on these very important decisions. And I think the city should take a look at that, and they should give us an explanation as to why there are going to be votes tonight where my district is not represented. Additionally, I would like to ditto what Larry Steingold said. I am all for, for the city trying to do something about fire mitigation and helping the citizens of Ojai to maybe, perhaps, keep their insurance. I know a lot of people are losing their insurance over this, and this is going to soon become a citywide community problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Next, we have Lila Francesi. Is that how you say it? Francesi? Okay. Thank you, Lila.
My name is Lila Francesi. I'm a resident of Fairway Lane, right next to one of the proposed sites for a permanent homeless community. I'm here tonight alongside many of my neighbors who believe there is yet another.
So that is agenda item number two. Do you want to speak on that item?
Can I speak on it?
Yeah, when we come to that item. This is general. No, that's all right.
I probably didn't check it off right.
Well, now it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Okay, we have some comments online.
Yes, Mayor, we currently have three raised hands for general public comment on Zoom. First, we have Councilmember Lang, followed by Bill Miley, and then Greg. Councilmember Lang, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Thank you for Weston. I just wanted to apologize to the members of my district. I am very frustrated, disappointed. I can't even put it into words that I'm not able to join you. And Karina, I heard you just now, and I just wanted to let you know I'm here. I, you know, I don't really fault the, our staff. I think this is one of the consequences of the Brown Act, one of the unintended consequences of the Brown Act. And I spent a lot of time researching and trying to figure out how to, you know, how to, if there was any way that I could participate tonight. So, but I am here. I am listening, and I really want to thank my colleagues for postponing some of those agenda items. You know, I'm very passionate about everything on tonight's agenda. And so I've weighed in, and I've talked to my colleagues wherever I could, and I've talked to the city manager. So they know my feelings, and they know my perspective. And I will be weighing in as often as I can here in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Next, we have Bill Miley, followed by Greg. Mr. Miley, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
This has to do with the Libby Bowl music contract. I read the Ojai Valley News article today on the Sterling music negotiation. I am usually unable to attend those concerts, but keep aware of the offerings by Sterling over the last four years. Wow, 25-plus concerts a year. The withdrawal of Sterling, and I'm aware of what Brian Blatts just said, it seems to be, was very troubling. What did I miss? I don't recall the council discussion having an agenda item about this. Sterling was good, I gather. Who crafted the one-year extension proposal? A new idea for a different age concert. It kind of looks like a non-cooperative planning process, which I thought, I thought the council was supposed to be in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we have Greg. Greg, you have the floor.
Hello. I didn't realize we'd be able to speak during the Item 2 Cabin Village discussion. So if that is allowed, I'll hold my comments until then.
Yes, Greg, please re-raise your hand during Item 2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. I would like to pull Item G, as there are several public comments on that item, so we're going to handle it separately. Anybody else like to?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to pull H, I, J, N, and O.
H, I, J, N, and O?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and take public comment. Go ahead and take, we have a public comment on H and J, which you both pulled, so I guess we'll go ahead and take those right now.
Can we state what they are for the public?
Yes. Well, first, how about, is there a motion to approve everything else first? We do that?
I'll move to approve everything else.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so let's go in alphabetical order. G would be first. Well, actually, let's do G last. Okay, so let's go with H. Mayor Protem, do you want to?
Let's chance to pull it.
Yep. H is Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Ojai Municipal Code Section 2.2-6.107, Termination of Residency for Council Districts. And we do have one public comment on that item, so let's go ahead and take that. Larry Steingold?
Good evening, Larry Steingold. I was going to come up and support the ordinance. The only question I have is why is it retroactive? Is there a reason why this law ordinance is being made retroactive to 2000, whatever it is, 17, 19, whatever? If there is no problem, and there is no law broken, and there are no ramifications, why go to the trouble of making the law retroactive, the ordinance? Why not just pass the ordinance and call it a day? And you'd be my, Mr. Summers, go right ahead, please, if it's up to you. Or Chair. But seriously, I mean, why is it retroactive? If there's no reason to make it retroactive, why bother? Is there a legal reason?
Mr. City Attorney?
Oh, wait till the end of public comments, then respond.
Okay, that's the end. That was my end of public comment.
Other commenters on this one? Okay, great. Mayor Council, so Staff recommends in the council introduce the ordinance retroactive to the beginning of the COVID shutdowns, March 19, 2020, to reflect that that was the beginning of the present acute housing crisis in Ojai. So that's to tie back to that objective. When our housing crisis, we've always had a housing challenge, but it really became an acute crisis that created the issues that resulted in this ordinance at that time.
Okay, but that doesn't tell me why you're making it retroactive. You're either protecting somebody or something.
I'd be happy to speak to that during, I mean, I'd be happy to speak to that. It was my, it was my recommendation, and it really had to do with consistency sort of across many different localities around the pre-COVID. You know, it really was about the change that happened at COVID. It had nothing to do with trying to.
Why make the law retroactive?
It had nothing to do with trying to protect anybody or anything. It just simply was that it was a point in time where the world changed. And so, you know, you may disagree with that being a reason, but that was the reason.
To make the law retroactive.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, the reason I polled it was also to raise that we should not make it retroactive. But I'll ask the question of the city attorney. I'm trying to imagine a circumstance now that there's, you know, in our current situation, that would be, would trigger the retroactive provision. I mean, I.
At this time, staff's not aware of any situation that would trigger the retroactive provision, although it was included in the ordinance, but the principal reason is noted. If anybody were to try to go back into the past, relevant statutes have passed, but if the court were to disagree with that, then the retroactive, retroactivity clause is also helpful. Although, all of the relevant statutes of passage, as to the past.
I just can't envision a circumstance where someone would be going back to the past at this point.
I wouldn't expect it, but it doesn't hurt to have the protection.
And then my second comment, and I made this comment when it came up the first time, is that I think it would be preferable to put a finite date by which a person can cure, I understand, concerns that 30 days would be too short in our, in our market. But I think we should put a date. Otherwise, we set ourselves up for a situation where somebody can run for office, be evicted for, you know, whatever, whatever means, and then not, not serve in their district for the rest of their term. So I would recommend that we put, you know, 90, 100 days. I'd even go further if I gained any support for it. But that's, that was my reason for polling.
Mayor?
Yep.
Would you like? Yes. When you say you'd even go further, are you thinking of additional days?
Yeah, if, you know, if 100 days wasn't enough, then, but put some bookend on it so we don't have, like, infinite indefinite not living in my district that I've been elected.
Well, there is a bookend, and that is, first of all, I cannot run for reelection because I do not, in District 4, because I do not have housing to this day, real housing in my district. So that's the bookend, for sure. It could not go on indefinitely. Am I correct, City Attorney?
I don't know your present housing status, and that's not on tonight's agenda. But if anybody were to attempt to run for a seat that they did not have, could not make the necessary findings to run for, that would be the max, the max of their term length.
Yes. That's the reason that I am not running for reelection, is because I cannot, after three years of looking, find housing in my district with two dogs that is affordable. That is a fact. My district is now the south side of Ojai Avenue. All the apartments are on, with the exception of Whispering Oaks, and I'm on the waiting list, which is about 100 years. You know, there is no affordable housing that will take two dogs. By affordable, I mean in the 2,000 range, not the 5,000, 6,000 range. That is a fact. It's a fact.
So the, my, my concern is that the Voters' Rights Act, you know, basically has said that we need to honor these district provisions. The state passed, or, you know, passed their own laws about how those districts work. And so if we, you know, effectively avoid the district provisions, I think we're putting ourselves at risk for being in violation of the Voters' Rights Act.
And I would love to hear from the city attorney on that first or after.
That's a, sure, answer the question. Are we putting ourselves at legal risk?
And the answer to that would be no, because we are still having four districts and the one elected at large mayor. Any questions regarding any particular council member's eligibility for a given district doesn't raise an issue with the Voting Rights Act because we still have the districts in place.
And if I could. So it is not a legal question. And I will point out that it was this body unbeknownst to the council at that time, the ramifications of the decision that they made. And that's one of the reasons why I suggested that we make it retroactive, is that when that decision was made, we did not foresee the future. We made that decision for, for, for the time and for the requirements, not foreseeing unintended consequences of that. It is very normal to revisit ordinances once you have seen how they play out and the flaws or the unintended consequences, however you want to, whatever you want to call them. I will also point out that there was an initiative on the ballot saying that we would like to get rid of districts as soon as possible. So there's that as well. And for that reason, I would not support putting an end date or something like that. I also, you know, I just, I'm loath to say to put in some kind of barrier that would assume that someone would run and then try to move to another district just to get some power. We have, we have people running who are unopposed. There's not a great rush to the door to put ourselves in this particular position. I would say that is kind of, kind of clear. So for that reason, I don't support it. Also, it's on the consent calendar. If we're going to revisit everything on the consent calendar, we just might as well forget moving forward.
Okay, all in favor of Item H? Let's, would you go one by one or go through all of these first?
Oh, I would suggest one by one on the items we polled. The votes may be different.
Okay, all in favor of?
And we would, I think, need a motion, which I'm hearing you make a motion.
Yes. Me, yes. Okay, actually, Mayor Protem, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a countermotion that we, that we continue with the old language, except for change the number of days that you can be, not reside in your district to 120 days instead of 30.
And just in this particular case, if it's a 2-2 vote?
2-2 vote, no action taken, the items continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
Because it needs, council can only adopt an ordinance with three votes, three affirmative votes.
Okay. Well, I would like to, I would like to continue this to the next meeting when we have all of us here.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Tick, 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 tick.
Yes.
Sorry.
I think the public might not understand that the reason the 2016-2020 council, which I was a member, adopted this draconian ordinance, which should not apply to small towns. It's absolutely ludicrous to divide a 4.4-mile town into four districts. It not only keeps people from voting at large, you know, I cannot run at large. In my, this is my 12th year on the city council, up until 2020, I always ran at large, okay? Now, we have a situation where only people that are in the district can run every, we have a very strange situation, because it not only impacts a council member, but it impacts the public. The public no longer can vote at large. That means at the next election, unless you live in District 4, and of course, we only had one person step up, it limits the pool of people who can step up and run for city council to, we were lucky to get one person to step up. You know, I don't know if the, if the public realizes that. We did not, no one on the council, not the mayor, Mayor Johnny, nobody wanted to adopt this ordinance. But if we didn't adopt it, and the city attorney can verify this, we would have had a lawsuit that cost way more money than we, our small town, could fight. This was adopted under duress, and I hope the public votes for, understands the impact, you know, I don't know, you know, there, it practically prohibits a renter from being on the city council, because a renter can lose their housing anytime after a one-year lease. It makes it so that only homeowners can feel secure to run for city council. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
And, and finally, if I could, it's good to know, I did not realize that we needed three votes, affirmative votes, for a ordinance. And as I recall, Councilmember Lang voted for this to, you know, she voted for adoption of this. We don't have her vote, so we will have to continue. And I guess we'll have the same discussion next council meeting, so please come back. Okay, we will move on to item-
Excuse?
Yep.
I, I need a clear second on your motion to continue.
Is there a second to continue?
Yes.
Thank you. And a unanimous?
Okay.
Understood.
So may I ask the City Attorney a question? So Rachel's vote no longer applies. Is that what you're saying?
No. Ordinances have to be voted twice. Regular ordinances, urgency is different. Regular ordinances have to be approved by council twice. First vote stands, but we need a second vote, and it's evident we don't have it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item I, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Ojai Municipal Code, Section 2-1.204, Increasing Compensation for City Council Members. Mayor Protam?
I pulled that, and I don't want to belabor it. I'm just not supporting it. And I think I expressed my views on it last, last go around, so.
Okay, so we need-
I just want the opportunity to not support it.
Okay.
But could you explain why you don't support it? Or you don't need to? Why would you not?
Well, I, I've, I'm, I'm listening to our council member at the end of the dais who would really like to move our consent calendar along.
Okay, is there a-
And I did, and I did spend about, I did spend three or four minutes explaining myself last time.
All right, is there a motion to approve I? We need to approve everything.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, all right, we will move on to item number J. We do have one public comment, Larry Steingold.
Good evening. Larry Steingold.
Can we have quiet, please? Thank you.
You have a budget here for security for 247.5. We're already adding 120-odd K for, I believe, police overtime. What is the budget going to be for year two? We're obviously getting some sort of expense numbers on operations, whether it's Amy Weiss, or security, or toilets, or food, or something. It's been, I don't know how long now, six months, three months, four months? Any business should be able to get a pro forma for two years from now. Something, anything, even a number coming out of the sky. Is it going to be a million? Is it going to be 2 million? What are we going to be obligated to? So that's why I'm up here on this, as a segue into it. But we need a number. I mean, we keep being told, oh, maybe at the end of the year, maybe this year, maybe next year, maybe in six months. It's a number. Pick one, something, a million dollars, so that we know two years from now that we're going to have a permanent line item budget, a million dollars plus 20, 20, 30% every year from now until forever. Just so that we know. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments online, Weston?
No, Mayor, no raised hands.
Okay, Mayor Protam? Is this for the same item? Yeah, okay.
My name is Casey Abbott. I'm a guest in one of your tents here. And very, very appreciative of your attitudes and efforts toward those of us that are unhoused. I'm a victim of the Thomas fire and lost my business and my home in the fire. But the, just to address what Larry's concern is about this expense item, and the only reason to bring it up was that, when does this thing end? The benefits of these, the security group here is phenomenal. They have precluded and prevented numerous incidents by identifying certain individuals that come here merely to cause trouble. Lots of it. Do you really want them in your neighborhood, trying to pick fights, trying to cause trouble? These guys are just doing a fantastic job of it. So just wanted to really, rather than question the bargain that we're getting for them, realize, appreciate their efforts and commend them for it. And if you can get them to continue for a fairly reasonable price, you think is a good deal, please continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I asked to pull this item, and not that I don't think that this expense is necessary, but we really should have quiet in the audience. But I did want to highlight the fact that, you know, so this is a six-month expense. My understanding is it's not covered by the grant money. And it is something that the city is shouldering 100%. The city is something like 12% of the land area for the valley, and we're something like 25% of the population for the valley. And yet, we are, we are paying 100% without any contribution from the County of Ventura. And I, you know, when we started this process out, I, I kind of had this idea that, that we were going to be in some type of partnership with the county. The county is an absent partner in this process. And that's the reason I polled it, is to point that out.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve this item? Any comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember?
Is it, I, I would characterize that the county is absent, and maybe there's not a financial direct contribution, but the county is very much involved in the process. And my mind is, the, the county homeless, the director for, I don't know quite how to describe, for the homeless services is involved in what we're doing. I'm not quite sure what, how to-
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
I believe Councilmember Francina, the Mayor Protam is making a statement. And his statement is, you know, we're shouldering a lot of unfunded costs. And we don't have any type of relief from that until the time that we actually, or if we actually build the Cabin Village project, at which time we do have state funding for it. In the interim time, these costs, you know, the costs for the unhoused coordinator that we just saluted this evening for Secure All, he's, he's correct. The city is shouldering those without any type of backfill from, from the county.
And, and it's correct that we can't, may I ask, that we can't pay ourselves back when we get the funding?
That's correct. That's not something that's reimbursable at this point in the process.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
And it is expensive, and we also heard it's doing wonders. Okay, is there a motion to approve I?
I'll make a motion to approve I.
Okay, a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, let's move on to J. J is the amendment, oops.
Amendment?
Yeah, H, I, J, okay, N, we're moving on to N, thank you.
Okay.
On-call trade and professional services award of agreements.
Yeah, and if I, are there any comments on either N or O? Because I just have a minor modification to these that I'd like to make.
J, N, and O, any comments on those three?
No, Mayor.
No, just, just N and O.
Okay.
So on each of these, we're granting some authority to our city manager to handle expenses as they come up. And I'm not, I don't object to that concept, and I'll support it, but I would really like to see something similar to what our community development director does when he has those, those director's exemption, where he does a report that says, we got this expense, and, and I am planning to issue payment for it and give us some reasonable amount of time. I defer to the city manager on that. We had a week for us or the public to comment and say, hey, I have a problem. As opposed to all, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, all of these expenses and the report sounds like all of them are imminently reasonable, but, you know, let's make sure we have the public aware of what we're doing there.
Through the mayor, could I ask some clarifying questions? So some of these, thank you, thank you for your request. I do think it's reasonable. I just want to point out, for some of these, they are for emergency-type services. So I could see where we could, maybe a twofold, a two-tiered thing.
I would have no objection to, to, when it's an emergency service, you say, you gave us the report, I made this expense, I viewed it as an emergency that I had to do without your-
Thank you.
And I'll also defer to you a reasonable amount of time for us to come back and say, hey, we got, we need to discuss this expense.
Totally reasonable, we can do that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, working it out. So is there a motion to approve N and O?
Yes, I'll, I'll move to approve those with that modification, that we're going to have that reporting built in.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, wonderful. We'll move on to G, and I did poll this because we have several presenters. G is Request from Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, SeaFrog, for Resolution in Support Phasing Out Oil and Gas Production in California. Mr. Chief Deputy City Clerk, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, through the mayor and city manager, I was the staff assigned to this report. The request came in from SeaFrog, which is known as Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas. The request is for staff to, staff and city council to examine a, and adopt a resolution supporting Senate Bill 1137. Senate Bill 1137 was adopted in 2022, and it is, it's requiring all oil and gas production facilities within a health protection zone to comply with new regulations. Since it was passed, there was a referendum hold on the bill. That referendum hold is no longer present. We did have Mr. City Attorney Summers and his team did analyze that, so if there's questions on that, feel free to ask. But basically, before you is the resolution to support and to accelerate the process of phasing out oil and gas extraction in California.
Thank you, much appreciated. Okay, we'll begin with Abra Stewart, and then Miguel Heredia, and then Carla Mena.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sticks and distinguished council members. My name is Abra Stewart, and I'm a longtime resident of Ojai, a former student of Mayor Sticks, and the program manager at Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, or SeaFrog. Founded by a group of community members in Ojai over 10 years ago, SeaFrog is a Ventura County-based advocacy organization leading the just transition away from fossil fuels to protect our health, our economy, and our climate. And I am here today to respectfully urge the Ojai City Council to recognize the threat that the climate crisis fueled by excessive oil and gas extraction and combustion poses to the health and safety of the citizens of Ojai, and to take action by passing the proposed resolution in support of phasing out oil and gas, item G. More than anything, I am urging you to listen to the young people that are in this room tonight. Part of my work at SeaFrog centers around helping to educate and engage youth from all across Ventura County on how to get involved in a variety of social issues. I myself was mobilized into the environmental movement as a high schooler here at Besant Hill School, and I returned after attending university to serve my community. Specifically, I run a program that helps to teach high school and college-age students tools for civic engagement. Each year, they work to grow and hone those civic engagement skills around a specific issue or advocacy project, and this year, our students have chosen to engage with local elected bodies and urging them to take climate action. And these students are here with me tonight. All of the young people behind me are incredibly intelligent and passionate about justice for the people of Ojai and our planet as a whole. These young people are folks that you were elected to represent and serve in their best interest, and it's not lost on what these, it's not lost on these students, what is at stake as they stare down the climate crisis that they are inheriting. They have expressed fear for what is to come if business as usual continues and if the electeds that were chosen to represent them don't use their power and influence for positive change. They have also demonstrated immense courage and grit and a desire to take an active part in making that change happen, and that is why they are here tonight. Most of them, full disclosure, aren't old enough to vote for you. However, they are old enough to remember how their elected officials did or did not stand up for their rights in the face of a climate crisis. Ojai is the smallest community, in the third-largest oil and gas-producing county in the state of California. We're also the smallest city and the fastest-warming county in the state, or in the entire USA. And we might be small, but we have a lot of power to set an example for the rest of the county, the state, and the country. And you have the chance to make a commitment here tonight to foster a better legacy for Ojai as a leader in putting the health of its, health and safety of your citizens before the greed of the fossil fuel industry. So as you listen to their comments, I urge you to really listen to what they're saying and hear their stories that are woven with facts, and urge to adopt, vote to adopt this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Abra. I'm so proud of you. Thank you. Miguel? Miguel Heredia? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. And then Carla, and then Ariana Macias.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and honorable council members. My name is Miguel Heredia, and I'm a 15-year-old sophomore at French Cabana High School and a proud citizen of Ventura County. I'm present here today along my friends and peers from Ojai to urge the adoption of our Climate Aiding Resolution, Agenda Item 1G. As a descendant of low-income residents to Ventura County, I've experienced the effects of pollution from the fossil fuel industry firsthand. A simple commute near the oil wells next to my grandparents' neighborhood can leave an unpleasant, harmful scent lingering around. These oil wells are known to emit large amounts of pollutants, such as carbon dioxide, black carbon, and methane, which not only contribute to climate change, but also have been known to severely harm the health of those nearby. For instance, onset of asthma, headaches, respiratory diseases, cardiovascular diseases are just some of the health impacts of living near oil wells. Now simply imagine those within close proximity of these establishments. Imagine those who work in the fields surrounding the wells. Picture how much harm spending days, weeks, months, and possibly years in the area can cause. Would you want to live near these wells? Would you want to work in these fields each day? I've personally only gotten a taste of it, with some within easy viewing distance of the wells. Analysis of oil and gas permitting across California shows that more than 8,000 residents of Ventura County live within 2,500 feet of an oil well. 60% of those are Latino. I'm deeply concerned about the health and well-being of not only my friends and family, but the community as a whole. That being so, I strongly and respectfully urge the adoption of our resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. Next, we have Carla Mena?
Mena.
Then Ariana, and then Mel.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carla Mena. I am the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for Los Padres Forest Watch, and I am here to ask you to support this beautiful resolution. So Los Padres Forest Watch, along with 30,000 membership base and numerous online advocates, expresses its strong support for the city of Ojai to adopt this resolution in support of phasing out oil and gas production in California. Oil and gas drilling is one of the most imminent threats to Los Padres National Forest and surrounding communities. It has the potential to significantly alter public lands and our climate. As stated, Ventura County is the fourth-largest producer of oil and gas in California. And there are more than 80, than 8,000 residents living within the setback zone. Notably, approximately 60% of these residents are people of color. The city of Ojai must act proactively to shield its community from harmful toxins associated with oil and gas development. Oil and gas drilling significantly impacts wildlife and can contaminate soil, groundwater, and rivers. We strongly urge you to support the adoption of this resolution to phase out oil and gas production in California to demonstrate our collective dedication to environmental sustainability and community health. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Next, we have Ariana Macias, and then Mel Espinoza, and then Molly McCoy.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and distinguished council members. My name is Ariana. I live here in Ojai, and I'm an incoming senior at Oak Grove School. I'm deeply passionate about the environment, and I care about the well-being of our future. I'm here today to advocate for the adoption of the Climate Aiding Resolution, Agenda Item 1G. Young kids should play outside and connect with nature, because they should be given the opportunity to see what earth has to offer and show them why it is crucial to protect it and advocate for it, both for their generations and for future generations. However, children are much more vulnerable to diseases caused by poor air quality, because they spend the most time outdoors compared to other age groups. They also, this also causes them to develop immature lungs, which then causes them to develop asthma and elevating infectious diseases, especially in these frontline communities. The youth council and council members like you to speak up for the rights of those who need their voices heard and their needs met, and above all, their- and their needs met, and above all, their health protected. We are seeing disproportionate health effects to low-income communities because they live in such a proximity to active oil and gas sites. In fact, 2.7 million Californians live within 3,200 feet of an oil well. We are creating a detrimental change to the environment. Scientists predict we will be seeing these changes by early 2050. We are already experiencing extreme droughts, storms, wildfires, and unprecedented heats, meaning that we must take action and prevent the biggest mistake of our lifetime. We care about our future, and we care, and we hope that you care as much as we do. As a youth, there is so much we can do. We hope our voices can be heard through you. We hope you care as much as we do because you are our hope. I urge you to pass the proposed resolution to accelerate the process of eliminating oil, gas, and destruction in California. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ariana, and thank you for being a member of the Mayor's Youth Council and being so involved in our community. Next, we have Mel Espinoza, then Molly McCoy, and then Andy Gilman. No. Andy, is this on a? Okay. Do you want number two? I have number, or no? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stix and distinguished council members. My name is Mel Espinoza. I was born and raised in Ventura County and reside in Moore Park. I've been advocating for climate justice for over five years as a member of the Youth Climate Strike LA. As a young youth organizer from Ventura County, I felt also it was my responsibility for me to be here today in solidarity with Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas to urge this Ojai City Council to take immediate action on the climate crisis by passing the resolution, Agenda Item 1G, in support of phasing out oil and gas production. For the last few years, I've advocated for the phase-out of oil and gas production from the city of Los Angeles to the capital in Sacramento, and now here today in Ojai. I've heard hundreds of stories, and every one of them has motivated me to continue to speak up despite pushback. The phase-out of oil and gas production's timeline needs to be accelerated. Recently enacted Senate Bill 1137 is not enough to protect frontline communities from pollution and our future from climate catastrophe. It is already facing potential delays from big oil. Although I do not reside in Ojai, I happen to know how harmful oil drilling is to our health and safety. Studies have shown that oil development near communities can contribute to health concerns such as headaches, upper respiratory illnesses, nausea, nosebleeds, and a possible increase in cancer risk. I live less than half a mile away from active oil drilling. My family has experienced nosebleeds and frequent headaches. There's a horrible smell from the oil drilling in a landfill near Barre. My Aunt Patricia passed away from cancer a few years ago, and she grew up near oil drilling and toxic waste facilities in Simi Valley. I've seen my friends and fellow activists lose their youth in fighting for a better future out of means for survival. Instead of joining after-school sports or clubs and going to Friday Night Lights, they spent their free time organizing strikes, town halls, and actions, urging council members and Governor Newsom to immediately address the climate crisis to ensure they have a just future. My hope for today is that Ojai City Council not only listens to these stories and these young people and passes a resolution, but joins in on urging fellow council members from other cities, senators, legislators, and Governor Newsom to ensure a healthy future for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Next, we have Molly McCoy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Molly McCoy, and I'm here not only as a lifelong Ventura County resident, but in solidarity with my fellow Sea Frog youth activists, imploring you to pass Item 1G. I've been involved in grassroots environmental activism since I joined Rancho Campana's High School Garden in my senior year, which once began as a green thumb turned into a strong passion for environmental and climate justice. I joined Sea Frog's very first youth civic engagements cohort in 2021, where I witnessed the horrors that frontline communities face every day with toxic fossil fuel infrastructure practically right in their backyards. I continued fighting for climate justice through my activism and studies at Moore Park Community College, and this brought me to where I am today, a rising senior at UC Davis, majoring in environmental policy and urban planning. While my fellow activists and I each have very unique, personal stories about how and why we got involved, we all started as typical high school students. I can promise you that none of us thought we'd be here, stay in front of you, championing for one of Ventura County's most comprehensive climate resolutions. But that's the beauty of grassroots activism. The smallest levels of community and government are the backbone of wide-reaching change, especially here in California, where our policies are often born out of community-led movements like these, have set a benchmark for the rest of the country and the world. We've continually made significant strides in protecting public health and safety, natural resources, and the climate, all while ensuring strong economic and urban growth. California has long been a pioneer in advancing climate policy, and now we are fighting a multi-year uphill battle to enact one of the most monumental pieces of climate legislation, Senate Bill 1137. This bill would champion environmental justice, as most of the 2.1 million Californians who live within the 3,200-foot range are from low-income communities of color, as per the Yale School of Environment. Despite the bill's passage last summer, the fossil fuel industry has aggressively challenged it with the referendum and now a lawsuit. It is no coincidence, as we are moving closer to a renewable future, and the fossil fuel industry is trying to shut us, especially youth activists, down, all for their profit. But with this resolution, the council can help pave the future of clean energy policy and a safe, equitable environment for all. It can uphold SB 1137, and by doing so, honor all the hard work that we and countless other climate activist networks across the state have poured into protecting our most vulnerable neighbors, and most importantly, our planet for future generations. We can inspire other counties to follow our example and reestablish California as a climate leader. We can win the fight against the climate crisis, starting right here and now in this very room. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Molly. And I just want to thank all the activists and speakers from Sea Frog. You're so inspiring, and your determination and focus to do something and make the, save the planet, is so admirable. So, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to pass Item G.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you so much for being here. It passed. Can we give them a hand? Thank you so much for being here. All right. We will move on to...
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
We have one more pulled item from Mayor Protem, Consent Item 1O. That would be the agreements related to the California Department of Transportation.
You know, I think I combined N and O together. That was my understanding as well, that the council voted on Items N and O together with the adjustment to have the city manager do reporting.
I'll make that change. Thank you for clarifying.
Can we move on to discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We will move on to Discussion Item 2, Cabin Village Proposed Location List from the Ojai Board of Realtors. And we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. And I do believe we also have a representative from the Board of Realtors front and center. Ms. Dale Hanson is there. So, I'm going to probably give a brief report and then ask Ms. Hanson to speak as well, if that's okay? She's nodding her head. Okay. Great. Please cue the PowerPoint that I have for this item. Thank you. And I want to give a shout out to our Public Works Director, who created this PowerPoint for me. But we're here tonight to discuss some potential Cabin Village site options. Council will know because we seemingly talk about this every single meeting. This is...
I'm going to ask for silence. It's really hard to hear up here when there's talking in the audience. So, thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you. This is following direction from the last meeting we had, which was back in July, where in the council took the Realtors, the Ojai Valley Board of Realtors, that is, up on their offer to assist the city in trying to determine some potential locations for the Cabin Village, which is where we hope to move Ojai Tent Down, which is just right outside the chamber here. So, I met with the Board of Realtors several times, looking at many different options, discussing pros and cons, and with the Realtors going back and forth with the owners, and also considering, you know, the neighborhood and optics and concerns from the community, concerns from the council. The Realtors well-understood that this was going to be a very public list, and so if somebody was not on board with the intended use or the scrutiny, that they really weren't going to be able to be considered. And so, for those wondering, you know, why and how we started off, you know, potentially with a list of many and or down to four, it's because, as we know, it's difficult to cite this project. There are, I think, on this list some good options, but they're not multiple. So, let's get into it, if we could. Next slide, please. So, consistent with your agenda packet, there are four locations we're proposing, and I think we have a slide that shows each one. So, rather than read them all off, I'm going to get into it as we go through them. So, next slide, please. Okay. Here's one option for you. This is on Ojai Avenue. You'll see that it's right next to the Ventura County Fire Station. It's just to the east of it. It's a little less than an acre. It's owned by a private party who is willing to sell it for a little less than $800,000. That's Option 1. We can have the next slide, please. Here's a different version of it, non-satellite, so everybody can see what we're talking about. And we're going to have the same satellite and map view on each one of these options. Next slide, please. Option 2. Okay. This is the so-called Maricopa Highway option. It's a little bit bigger. It's about a little over 1 and 1/2 acres. Owner is willing to sell for about 1.75. And I should point out, 1.75 million. The Realtors wanted me to stress that, you know, these suggested prices are not negotiated, and so they could be up, they could be down. This is just a ballpark of where they believe they may end up being. This location is on Maricopa Highway on the corner of Church Road. It's a vacant lot. That's the satellite view. Next slide, please. And there is the map view. Okay. Let's move into Option 3. Okay. Option 3 is a little harder to describe with an address, and I thank the Mayor Protem for pointing out some issues with the agenda when we published it. But this is the Lower Public Works Yard. It's not accessible to the public currently, so we have had people showing up at the Public Works Office wanting to tour it. It's part of an active Public Works Yard. So, if you enter into the Public Works facility and go down the hill, that's where you'll find this location. How big is it? You know, it's a little over an acre, probably 1.1 or 1.2 acres. This is a city-owned property. Both the Public Works Director and the Community Development Director believe that this is a viable location that could work just fine if the city council provided us with direction to go there. So, here's the satellite image. And let's go to the next slide, please. This is the map image, and I think the map image is probably not quite as good as the... Let's go back to the satellite image, because I think that kind of, that... It's not really, it's kind of hard to show in this picture, but it's basically most of the square or the rectangle on the left with a little bit of the triangle as well. It's not a great representation. Sorry. This is one of those pieces of property that's actually over two different parcels. We would probably need to go through the process of merging it if we were going to move forward here, but that's an administrative chore. Okay. Let's go to the fourth option. This is probably not something that the council is going to discuss very much because there are some challenges with this one, but this is Rotary Park. Yeah. Well, hear me out. You know, because this is a challenging project, you know, we really have to consider everything. And so, we, you know, we really, you know... Is it possible at this location?
Sure.
It is. We could make something work here. Are there some challenges? Yeah. It's right, you know, off a busy highway. It's at the entrance to town. It abuts the Ojai Valley Inn. As you can see from the image, there's a number of oak trees. So, yes, we have some challenges at this location. 1.32 acres. It is city-owned. So, anyway, we're just trying to show you what we think are options, and, you know, we're going to do whatever council decides to do. Next slide, if we could, just to show the map view. And there it is again. So, at this point, Dale, may I ask you to come up, if you don't mind, just to offer some colored commentary on all this? Thank you.
Thank you, Dale Hanson. I'm a member of the Board of Realtors, and as you recall, a couple of months ago, Sharon Mahari, who is our Board President, made the offer to the city to try to help find the right locations. Sharon can't be here tonight, so I'm here. I just want to say that we had a healthy list of options, but as the city manager has pointed out, some of the people would not sell, wouldn't even want their name on a list, and so we had to respect that. We actually did not put the Rotary Park on the list. It was added. The other three are ones that were left that we think are a possibility. They all have problems. They all have problems. The, and I won't go into those problems. I'll let the people speak for themselves. I think they're here tonight. And then also, there are some other properties, and I don't know that they're available. There's one large property. I have no idea how big it is, but it looks to be landlocked. And I don't know. It's on North Montgomery. I think the 600 block of North Montgomery. I've looked over the fence, and I can see it's a huge piece of property, and someone said the owner was interested. So, that's a possibility, although I don't know. It's in a neighborhood. Neighborhoods don't seem to fare well with this. At any rate, we did offer the fire station, a lot next to the fire station, the one on Maricopa Highway. Unfortunately, it's also across the street from a daycare for children. And then there's the Public Works Yard, which seems to be the most favorable, and the city does own it, so we don't have to buy it. But I guess we'll have to grade it for any kind of drainage problem that may be. And that's really all I have to offer. If there are any questions, I'll take them. If not, I'll sit down.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions? I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Realtors, Dale and Sharon, for stepping forward and doing this work and volunteering to help out the city. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Questions?
I have a question for both the Board of Realtors and our city attorney. When you say "willing to sell," do you mean willing to sell for the intended use?
Oh, yes. We had to tell them what it was.
But isn't that, someone brought this up, so I thought I would ask the question. Isn't that a form of discrimination? Is that legal? It's like saying that we don't sell to certain racists, for example.
That's, it is not a form of discrimination that's unlawful for a property owner to be unwilling to sell land to the city or the city to use for the intended purpose of building a cabin village. It is unlawful to refuse to sell to persons who are of one race or another or one gender or another. Those laws apply to individual person purchasers, not to the city in this case. We can't benefit from those laws.
Okay. I just, several people brought that up, so I thought...
Valid question, but yeah.
We need clarification.
That doesn't help us in this case.
Because they're willing to sell, the other properties were for sale. They were just not willing to sell for the intended use.
Any other, any other questions? Mayor Protem?
So, I noticed that we don't have any properties
So I noticed that we don't have any properties in the unincorporated area of the county. And I'm wondering if that we, you know, the process was extended into the unincorporated area on your end and also...
We were, we were advised to try to keep it within the city because we have more control over what's happening there. And the county has not been that eager to work with us so far, as far as I know. So we kept it within the city, our meager 4.2 square miles.
And can I ask a question, a clarifying question, because this question has come up a lot from the public? In terms of receiving the grant, the state gave it to the city of Ojai with the expectation that it would be within Ojai. And so when people say, well, what about Oakview or Miramonte or somewhere farther away? Mr. City Manager, will you comment briefly on that?
Sure. So let's, let's take a step back. The state awarded a grant for this project to be constructed here on the, you know, the Kent Hall area. And so anything that we're doing is a application amendment. And we've been in discussions with the Grant Chief continuously about this at the state. They're very well aware of what we're doing. But the guidance that they've given us is they understand that there's going to be a new location. They have to review and approve it. They're likely to approve it, but the new location has to provide more services or better services than what's offered here at Kent Hall. That's number one. There has to be some reason why we're proposing to make this move. It can't just be for political reasons. And they've also advised that it's difficult for them to consider approving a grant if it's outside of the jurisdiction to which they're awarding the funding to. It's possible if you were working with another governmental agency like the county. And let's say there was a county of property that was adjacent to the city, that might make some sense. But if it's a private property off in Oakview or Miramonte, the question they have is, well, that's not the city of Ojai, and that's who we awarded the money to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Yeah. So several people asked, and the newspaper reported, that there was no... We're not considering properties in the industrial zone because at a previous council, council meeting, my understanding was that three, the council majority did not support putting housing in the industrial zone. Is my understanding correct?
Let me clarify that. So the direction from council provided at the July 9th meeting was for the City Manager to work with the Board of Realtors and to vet the, the proposed list. And so that's my, my obligation was to receive that and to provide also some, some guidance, as Ms. Hanson mentioned. And one of the, one of the instructions I provided was, look, I'm aware from prior council direction provided, as well as individual conversations I've had with council members, that there's not an appetite to move forward in, you know, the Bryant area, the industrial area, if you will, of town. And so I don't want to propose locations only to have... I know that these are non-starters. Similarly, I mean, there, you know, there have been properties that are near, nearer the downtown that were proposed. And I said, you know, same thing. I, I know that there's going to be community issues with that. We heard them, you know, at prior meetings. So that was the direction provided, was for me to vet the list. And so I did that, based upon what, you know, I've heard from you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
I do have a follow-up question for the City Manager. Did you ask specifically about this project in the industrial area on Bryant Street? Or were you, were you extrapolating from, you know, decisions that, you know, are, the council's vote not to change zoning or not to allow, you know, whatever work, work-lived environments? Or was it specific to this particular project as well?
Yes, specific to this particular project, not extrapolations. And these actually were, you know, individual conversations I had with council members, just knowing the process. I was involved in just coming forward and saying, hey, you know, this is, this is where I sit on this. And just, you know, so I'm combining those concerns.
So Bryant Street was a non-starter, or the industrial area was a non-starter?
Yes, with this council.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. I believe we have 19 public comments. We'll begin with Richard MacArthur. Then we have Linda Burr, and then Betsy Van Light. And once again, if you could come to quiet, thank you. Hi, Richard.
Hi, I'm Richard MacArthur, member of the Rotary Club of Ojai West. And I was a club chair developing the park. And these are the plans, both sets. And Austin Klein, one of our members, was the county parks director when the railroad gave the property to the city. And he made sure that the parcel that's now, that was occupied by the railroad depot was given to the city for a park. The city had worked for many years to create a park at that location. Some plans and possible state grants were worked on, but little was accomplished because of lack of funds. Rotor International gave a challenge to each club for a lasting project at its 100th year centennial. Austin Klein's vision for a park to improve the entrance to the city of Ojai was chosen by the club as their centennial project. I, I signed an agreement with the city of Ojai Wednesday, June 30th, 2004, at the Public Works Office across from the police station. That agreement gave the Rotary Club of Ojai West authority and permission to build and maintain a park at the former railroad property. The city was to provide water and maintain the lawns. Our Rotary Club is responsible for additions, repairs, and maintenance. Every one of the 50-plus members participated in planning, fundraising, and/or construction. The cost of the park was 1,200, over $1,250,000. The cost was covered by generous donations from the community members and organizations, in-kind donations of labor and materials, and state grants for an intermodal transportation site. The Rotary Club of Ojai West, for the past 20 years, has maintained the park, added benches, tables, and other items. Plantings have been maintained and replaced as needed, and repairs have been made where damage has occurred. Please keep Ojai Community Park as a beautiful entrance to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And, and once again, we appreciate your enthusiasm. If you could please hold your applause. Next, we have Linda Burr, then Betsy Van Light, and then Ruth Miller.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Linda Burr. I live on North Signal. And I also am a member of Rotary Club of Ojai West. And you just got the history. So I want to thank all of you for taking seriously providing shelter for the unhoused in our city. This is not an easy task, and it is controversial. But I commend you all for working diligently to find a solution, especially for applying for and being awarded the $12 million from the state. It is the right thing to do for our small community, and I thank you. So taking the four possible areas under consideration tonight, from the west to the east, I'm hoping the Maricopa and the Rotary Park properties, which are highly trafficked highway areas, are not close to, and are not close to supporting agencies like Help of Ojai and the Family Shelter Shower Van, are not selected. The most easterly property on Ojai Avenue near the fire station, I hope, is not selected because spending money acquiring property when there are properties owned by the city available to build the cabin village makes more sense. I am here tonight to urge you to choose the South Signal property at the city yard to develop Cabin Village. Selecting this property gives you the most use of the grant money you were awarded to spend on building and hopefully sustaining the project without using any of the grant money to purchase property not owned by the city. South Signal is central to agencies providing assistance and is at the end of a very lightly trafficked area of Signal Street, which makes it safer and more private for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we have Betsy Van Light, then Ruth Miller, and then Dale Hans... No, oops, Howard Scher.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. I'm Betsy Van Light. I'm a resident of Ojai. And I want to start by reflecting that I've noticed a tendency to talk about our unhoused community members as though they belong to some other tribe, as though they are not part of us. The truth is, though, we know that many of our housed community members are barely hanging on and that rental prices and mortgages are absolutely insane, even for folks who work. It doesn't take much to end up on the streets in this town. That's true for Ojai. It's true for the nation. And think about how traumatizing and stressful it is to be unhoused. Daily life can be really hard. We tend to assume that mental illness or substance abuse lead to homelessness. But I want to point out, the literature is very clear that in many instances homelessness leads to mental illness and/or substance use. Our 10-town community members need permanent supportive housing with active case management so they can get back on their feet and reintegrate into productive community life. Offering a hand up into small but safe dwellings is huge. It's the right thing to do from an ethical perspective, and also it's very practical. Doing nothing just leads to more crisis. And I want to point out that providing housing and services to our community members doesn't attract people from outside. Read the FAQs that the city has. It's very clear. This offer is for our own community members who have become homeless. The Public Works Yard is the best location. I, I really think it is. The city owns the land. The Public Works Director is supportive. It's large enough. We can get quite a few houses on it. And it's close to services like Help of Ojai. And at the same time, it feels secluded and private. There are trees ringing the property, giving it sort of a protected vibe. And the healing process for those who will be in the houses requires this really interesting mix of community engagement and access to services, but also rest. And the Public Works Yard is great for that. I'm grateful to, to everybody who's been involved. And I urge you to take action tonight and vote for the Public Works Yard.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Ruth Miller, then Howard Scher, and then Dale Hanson.
Hi, I'm Ruth Miller. I'm with the Unhoused Task Force. And I really don't think I can beat that, but I'll say something. Good evening, Mayor Stick, City Council, Manager Harvey, and staff. Again, I want to thank all of you for your forward-thinking, compassionate programs, which have improved the lives of our most vulnerable community members. You've gone above and beyond, especially since the Supreme Court has dismantled the Ninth Circuit ruling. You could have told everyone to pack up their tents and leave. Instead, you've chosen to continue the programs you started and even went to further improve their lives. I cannot imagine the fear that people are experiencing in other communities where the leadership is not as sympathetic. I also want to thank the Board of Realtors for their work in gathering possible locations for the Cabin Village, which, once constructed, will continue to help our unhoused neighbors recover from the trauma of living on the street intense and in cars. The village, along with the, what did I say? The village, along with time, with onsite management, will improve their wa... Okay. Jane and Whitney are going to improve their lives in ways that we cannot imagine. I think the Ojai Avenue location or the Maintenance Yard, either one could work. I visited both locations. I might be arrested, but I've been inside the Maintenance Yard. And it's really serene. It's quiet. It's surrounded by trees. It has, you don't even see the street. The street can't see in. So it's going to be quieter. It's going to have less effect from car exhaust. It's walking distance to services. Especially important is the close proximity to Help of Ojai's food pantry. They need food. They need to be able to get to the food pantry and carry it back to the residences. It's close to the police station when safety is needed. It's also walking distance for Ben to continue his check-ins with the residents. The entrance is, and I've been told will remain, on Montgomery. It's a very short walk to Libby Park, so the residents can avoid traffic. The process of this achievement has been strange and certainly not perfect. Nonetheless, what you have already accomplished is amazing. I have every confidence the Cabin Village will be...
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you. Next, we have Howard Scher, then Dale Hanson, and then Katie Donaldson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Howard Scher. I've lived here for six years, and I live on South Ventura Street. When I look at the neighborhood that we have, it's why we came here. We came from Santa Cruz, and it was, we went from one paradise to another. And we bought into a neighborhood where Johnny Johnston is, is our neighbor. And about four or five years ago, when we got some money from the federal government because of the pandemic, we just turned it over. We said to Johnny, where should we donate this? Donated to the homeless shelter, extending one more month of their service after the winter. So we're very aligned with what's going on in this community. But I, I, I don't, I don't want a neighbor that I don't know. And 30 neighbors in a, in a, in a, in a neighborhood of pretty much about six, seven homes is a little bit overwhelming. And I don't think we can get past that too easily. I don't know anywhere. I was very active in Santa Cruz County government and nonprofits. I do not know any place where you have a government services residence that has increased in value. I only know that the values tend to go down. And I've, there's one family in particular that's adjacent to the, the yard. And Mayor, I know you were there the other day. And they, they're lovely on an island. And it's, it's just very disturbing. I just don't know that government should be choosing winners and losers. I want this project to go forward. I just don't want it to be in, in the neighborhood that I live in, that I'm very happy in. And it's, it's, and all four locations have the same people talking about the same thing. We, we just want to have a say and, and support what you guys want to do, but somewhere else. Not in my backyard. It essentially is. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Next, we have Dale Hanson, then Katie Donaldson, and then Denise Barnes. Oh, okay. All right. Katie Donaldson?
Katie Donaldson, thank you for letting me speak. I am the pastor at Ojai United Methodist Church, right across the street from the Maricopa location. I am so grateful that you are looking at various locations in town for this. And I'm excited that you're taking care of the houseless population. For as much as I adore the idea of having this location across the street from the church, I just want to make sure we take into consideration the safety measures of being by vulnerable populations, including the preschool, which is on our church property, as well as the high, excuse me, the high school and the junior high. And with that in mind, also taking into consideration things that people have already mentioned, the accessibility for the houseless population, so making sure public transportation, food, locations, things like that are taken into consideration. And so with that in mind, as I look at the properties available, the Signal Street one looks like it may be the best measure to move forward with. But just wanted to have, have that voice and let you know that I am grateful for you and thank you for the work at these four locations.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we have Denise Barnes, and then Daryl Ralston, and then Kendra Yose.
Good evening, City Council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Reverend Dr. Denise Barnes, and I am the Director for Justice and Compassion of Central Ministries for the California Pacific Conference of the United Methodist Church, with the longest job title I have ever had. I'm responsible for the Justice and Compassion Ministries of 375 United Methodist Churches across Southern California. And many of us worked very hard at getting SB 5 passed where we could allow church properties to build affordable housing on their sites regardless of zoning. I am a former Ojai resident and a former member of Ojai United Methodist Church. I'm inspired by what Ojai is doing. And I wish that I could take what you're doing and put it out in all the other places across the conference that I serve. I face these, these city council meetings regularly on behalf of many of my churches who are trying to do similar things. And the issue is always a NIMBY issue, always. I like to say Yigby, yes, in God's backyard, because all of this is God's backyard. And all of this is places where we should all be living as a community, with a community, supporting and helping each other. To that end, I do understand the concerns of some of the members of Ojai United Methodist Church, which are in terms of security for the children that are at the preschool, the high school that's over the road. It's an aging congregation. I know that wherever this ends up, our church will serve and help those people. But I do understand that they are scared of security issues because of the vulnerability of that church and how it's located and the structure of the buildings there. of that church and how it's located and the structure of the buildings there. However, I do also know that every single one of these developments that I'm involved in has incredibly good security, with retina scanning for residents and keeping people safe and ensuring that all is well. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that these developments that are being made are being developed and improved all of the time and are being designed to fit within the communities of the, for the people that actually live there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Denise. Next, we have Darryl Ralston, then Kendra Yose, and then Sue Williamson.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, it's a pleasure to address you. My name is Darryl Ralston, and I'm the President of the Persimmon Hill Homeowners Association. I represent 43 property owners in Persimmon Hill. And I urge you to continue to look for a new location for Cabin Village, other than the South Signal Street location. The Signal Street location is 150 to 200 feet from the entrance to Buckboard Lane. And with the entrance now coming down Montgomery Street, it will funnel people right into Montgomery Street, which has become a very large thoroughfare with the use of Creek Road. And I could bring up many concerns that have already been undoubtedly brought up to you, because no resident wants this project near them. However, with pedestrian safety, access, and the close proximity to Libby Park, Libby Bowl, the Equestrian Trail, the bike trail, the tennis courts, and Persimmon Hill, it's truly a concern. The residents in Persimmon Hill and the neighboring streets will be affected by this, if this location is chosen. While I cannot speak to property values, I think it's already been said there that there's probably not going to be any increase in the property values with a project like this in the nearby. And additionally, allowing city property to be developed for a project like this takes away and encumbers the future leaders of the city of Ojai, that they can't use that property for some use that they may need in the future, that they'd have to look elsewhere for property. Again, please continue to search for a suitable location for the Cabin Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. Next, we have Kendra Yose, then Sue Williamson, and then Delaney Labar.
Hello, I am Kendra Yose, homeowner on Fairway Lane, the street that is on the corner of the proposed encampment relocation site at the 1200 block of East Ojai Avenue. The city or the Board of Realtors has not contacted any residents on Fairway Lane or the businesses that are, that were considered for this location. The first I heard of this was when the agenda for this meeting came out and this vacant property was listed as a possibility. It is a common courtesy to the people who are directly impacted to let them know ahead of time before this happens. I have, my concerns are many. The East Ojai Avenue location is on the main drag of our beautiful tourist town and across the street from two lovely hotels and directly next to Fire Station 21. Fairway Lane is a residential dead-end street with children. The south end of Fairway Lane ends at the San Antonio Creek, and this could be very problematic as an unsupervised open space. The community of Ojai is dependent on tourism. Visitors don't come to Ojai to spend their money and enjoy a community and have a cabin village on the main drag. Out of dignity and respect for those who need this encampment, they deserve a bigger space away from being on parade on the main street of our small town. This location is too far from the center of town and the services that they require. This is a very small lot, lot with less than one acre, with no room for expansion. Another major concern, which I'm not sure you're aware of and is very serious, that there is a Montessori school operating at 1502 East Ojai Avenue called Our Lady and All Angels Church, previously called the Liberal Catholic Church, which is 352 yards from the proposed unhoused, unhoused encampment site at East Ojai Avenue. That is very close to a lot of small children and a daily school. The director of that school has not been notified at all of this proposal. The decision to relocate the Cabin Village to a residential neighborhood will definitely have negative impacts to my neighborhood and to the businesses across the street from it. Will the city be providing security on my neighborhood? Please consider another site, possibly the South Signal location. I have been a huge supporter of the Help of Ojai for several years and see the need for this help. I understand that this is an issue, and I am not ignoring it, but there is a better location for this community of people. Thank you for hearing my plea, and please notice all of my neighbors here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Next, we have Sue Williamson, then Delaney Labar, and then Gordon Claussen.
Good evening, and I want to join everyone else in thanking you guys for all the incredible work you've done to make this happen. I've heard two complaints that I want to speak to. One is this notion of the property values. I live in Terramina, and the neighbors all just had a fit when we put in HUD housing and low-income people. And the fact is, that has not deterred the fact that their prices of these little tiny houses have been going for over a million dollars. This is really, I don't think, a legitimate concern. The other thing is that this notion that what's going to happen in the future, how much money, blah, blah, blah. When I was younger and I bought my first house in the Bay Area with my partner, we were starving artists, thought, how are we, and we got it real cheap, this big giant mess of a house, thought, how, you know, oh, well, we'll just put a new roof on it, that'll be all. Well, no, that was, it was a train wreck. I mean, everything had to be done. We didn't know, but somehow, over time, we managed to do it. And I think that if we take these steps, this is a generous community, it's a rich community, there are many ways that we'll be able to maintain and support this community over time, and I don't think that should hold us back. I think we should move forward with it. I definitely think that the best location is the Maintenance Yard. I've been saying that all along, that that's where it should be, because it's got the trees, it's, it's located centrally, et cetera, as everybody's said that already. So I hope you'll move ahead with that property, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next, we have Delaney Labar, then Gordon Claussen, and then Doug Labar.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks, council members, staff, and inimitable Ben Harvey. My name is Delaney Labar, and I live at 206 South Blanche, one block from the encampment. My husband and I, you know, before I get started, I just say there are two things coming up, like property values, like they're not high enough yet. How is that a problem at this point? And then the second one is, oh, can't have it near the kids. This is not a community of pedophiles. This is a community of people who need a leg up. So I find that to be really bogus, though it'll be fenced, there's security. So enough said on that, but I really, I find that offensive. And our kids could know that we take care of our people. So, back to my notes. My husband and I unequivocally support acceptance of the California grant and working with dignity moves. Please do not look this gift horse in the mouth so that you destroy the good in search of the perfect. No, we have no crystal ball about what happens at the end of the grant and how we'll fund it, but folks are working hard on developing several scenarios for the future now. And as Sue Williams said, we can get the money. This community is not poverty-stricken. At least with this grant, we will have a two-year head start with initial developmental costs and personnel services covered. The two caseworkers from Help of Ojai will help with transitions, as they already do, and they know the tenants well. Dignity Moves is a really well-thought-out, flexible format for building these small rowhouse developments, combined with a raft of services to get the unhoused people stabilized and back into more mainstream life. I really encourage people to go to dignitymoves.org and really dive into the website, because you will be so impressed with how well-thought-out this is. And there are, they're like, I don't know, a dozen of them around. So just take, and one's in Santa Barbara. I mean, if Santa Barbara can do this, I'm sure Ojai can find a way. So yes, I'm to, we're totally in for, do not give up this grant. This is an unbelievable gift for us to get started on a solution. The change, and I want to say, the change in the Ojai tent town is palpable since Amy Weiss joined us and is living within-
Thank you, Delaney. Next, we have Gordon Claussen, then Doug Labar, and then Jane Walter.
Hi, Gordon Claussen, I'm a 36-year Ojai resident. And the last time I was up here, I was talking about the incredibly important topic of pickleball here on the City Hall campus. But today, I'm here about item two, obviously. And I'm sorry, I had to respond. I'm sorry, it's rich hearing from somebody who lives two blocks from the homeless encampment saying somebody else's neighborhood should have it, and I really extolled the virtues of doing that. I'm going to be that impacted person. I'm against the proposition, obviously, in positioning the homeless encampment next to Fire Station 21 on Ojai Avenue. It would impact a lone entrance to a very small neighborhood, 13 houses on a three-block dead-end street, Fairway Lane. In consideration, it's about, it's less than one-acre lot, we've heard today, that would somehow be shielded from Ojai Avenue and vision there and from our little street. I think that's really going to be difficult. There are two attractive hotels across the street that would have to share that impact as well, and nobody's heard them represented here tonight. I'm not sure they even know. Our road is mentioned dead ends near San Antonio Creek and a small woodlands that provided unsanctioned homeless housing in the past. I've seen the camps there. We have previously experienced police intervention because of antisocial behavior. That's, that's just a fact. The negative effect on real estate aesthetics alone, also real estate values, and I understand everybody's house is incredibly valuable, but it's just really nice to be in somebody else's neighborhood. That's, I am here as an abashed NIMBY. I'm one of those pickleball players who's stumped to maintain the City Hall campus that's currently shared with Ojai's unhoused population. I personally witnessed the property of Ojai pickleball brooms and the like taken and then retrieved from our homeless neighbors and finally protected in locked sheds that we had to buy and man ourselves. I have witnessed drug sales bans at City Hall, personally. I wasn't partaking. A confrontation with one of the homeless people preceded vandalism on the lock of our storage bin that had to be broken open by the police across the street. That's just, that's just what happened. I don't want to condemn earnest people who have become unhoused through no fault of their own, but mental illness, and I'm going to disagree here, is a predisposing factor, and also, yes, a consequence of living on the edge of society. I worked for 36 years in Ojai Hospital's emergency department. I personally treated assault victims from within the current homeless encampment. They also described to me the wanton destruction of their meager property by one of their own. A worrisome mixture of people will come and go over time. How can I not advocate against bringing exposure to this kind of trouble to within three doors of my own home, my three daughters and my wife?
Thank you, Gordon. Next, we have Doug Labar, then Jane Walter, and then Curtis Connect.
Good evening, Doug Labar. Well, I have, I've pre-written something out here, but it's obvious it's not going to work. Choosing the site for the unhoused should not be, should not be looked at as a temporary, should be looked at as a temporary fix. There is no way to consider a site without first understanding what Dignity Moves does. And anybody who's not familiar with what Dignity Moves, their whole agenda, and what they're, what they're all about, you're doing a disservice to the community and yourself if you don't get up on, up to speed on what's really happening with Dignity Moves. They are an incredible organization. They have a good website, you can read about what they do and everything about them there. It was so impressive for me to familiarize myself with what they're doing. At first, I supported the acquisition of the property at 1400 Maricopa Highway. It is near public transportation, the supermarket, the hospital is on fairly flat ground. But most importantly, I talked to the owner myself, and she represented that she would sell it for less than what's listed in the paperwork here. One of the things that Dignity Moves does is they also have a negotiating power where they will talk to a prospective ten, home property owner about a no-cost lease agreement by getting, giving a like-kind value of a tax credit to the owner. Also, property taxes are suspended for nonprofit operation, so there's a huge advantage in being able to explore it different ways than having to just purchase it outright. So I just encourage everybody to read about what Dignity Moves is so that it's, it does not just turn into another controversy here in Ojai where no issue is too small for controversy.
Good point. All right, thank you, Doug. Jane Walter, then Curtis Connect, and then Maria Halverson.
Hi, you guys. Good evening, I'm Jane Walter. Majority of you guys know me as the Co-Executive Director of Help of Ojai. I have, throughout this journey with us in the city, specifically the encampment growing, the encampment resolution funding grant that we applied for, very intentionally not spoken at this podium about this program. This is, like, our role in this has been unwavering, in that Help of Ojai will support residents of the encampment once a location is chosen. So we are very much held up in this process because we have not made a decision as a community to move forward with this. I think it was wonderful the way in which Rick was honored at the beginning of this meeting, and I think it's important to acknowledge that. Rick was hired in October of last year. So we have been doing this for a while. We have an emergency, you guys know this. We need to move forward. I know it's not entirely up to you guys in terms of what happens next. I know you're listening to your constituents. I know the community is concerned about what's happening. I know that our name is mentioned a lot in terms of what we can do and what we can't. And so I really, really encourage you all to make a decision, and soon, so that we can move forward and we can start doing the work that really needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next, we have Curtis Connect, then Maria Halverson, and then Debbie Rubenstein. Curtis, go on. Okay, Maria Halverson?
Hello. I want to just start by saying thank you for all this work that you guys have clearly done on helping our unhoused population. It's a hard, just if you spend five minutes in here today, you realize how hard of a job it is. And so thanks, everyone, and all of our community for, for participating. I have just a short, one-sentence thing to say, so I'm going to keep my comments brief. The woman who spoke second said a lot of what I want to say, wanted to say, so thank you for saying that perfectly. But I would just urge the council to choose the Signal Street property that the city of Ojai already owns for the, for the Cabin Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Next, we have Debbie Rubenstein, then Lila Francesi, and then Renee Roth.
Good evening, Mayor and Congress, I'm Congress. I'm telling you, it's, this is too late for me. You need to have these meetings during the day. Help some members. I just want to say first, I have a- Um, I just want to say first, I have a very dear friend who I've known for 20 years or more, and I met with her for lunch a couple of weeks ago. And I was, we were talking, she doesn't live here in Ojai, she was in Moore Park. And we were talking, I was telling her about this project that's going on here in Ojai. And she said to me, is it by Dignity Moves? And I said, yes. Her brother is very high up in the company, I guess, I don't know what you would call it, but, and she says she had nothing but phenomenal things to say about it. So that really made me happy and so I hope that kind of puts everybody a little bit more at ease. But, um, I too, I am, um, want to talk about not using the property next to the fire station. Again, there is a neighborhood there, but there are the two hotels across the street, which at the last meeting you pa, already passed for the Capri to have, hold events there and are still in tango about the hummingbird. And I just think that it's just so much going on the east end, and the east end is also quite a ways away from everything that they need to, you know, get to and stuff. I too, and for the Public Works Yard, I think that that's near Help of Ojai, that's near everything that they need. There's, the transportation is right there for them. And with all the money saved on having to buy a piece of property, we could put Larry's mind at ease because there'll be plenty of money left over for security. So, um, and the only thing that I want to say about, um, like, negative a little bit, is how when somebody doesn't follow the rules and stuff and they do get kicked out of camp or, you know, out of the tents, I think there needs to be a program in place as far as where, where they go and what to do with them. Because I've noticed our streets have gotten a little worse with the homeless people and a lot messier. Um, there's one in particular that leaves garbage like everywhere. And I just think that there needs to be some program for those that they're just not let out on the street to fare on their own. And, um, that is, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Uh, next we have Lila, and then Renee Roth, and then Larry Steingold.
Hi. Thanks for staying so late tonight. Okay. My name is Lila Frances. I'm a resident of Fairway Lane, right next to one of the proposed sites for a permanent home, homeless community. I'm here tonight alongside many of my neighbors. As you know, they have spoken that I believe that property next to me, I would actually be the next-door neighbor, is an inappropriate location to propose such a project. Um, I don't want 32 houses next to me, and I don't know if you know this, but I own five more feet into that property than was shown on that map. This location also faces two of our most occupied hotels, has a 45 mile an hour speed limit in front of it, and is diagonal from a preschool. But most importantly, placing homeless housing on a main street of Ojai is just simply not acceptable. I'm against the Rotary Park placement as well. I just don't think it's something that we should have people who are driving to our town and paying a ton of money to come here and, uh, support our local businesses. I don't think that that's the first thing they should see when entering the east side or the west side of town. The 42% increase in the homeless population over the past five years, the source of that is Ventura County's Point in Time Census, has become a significant challenge. The Ojai Police Chief stated in the Ojai Valley News that there's not much they can do when problems arise. Since homelessness has increased in Ojai, my son has been offered drugs consistently by the new homeless transients in town. The sidewalks in our town, our kids are commuting on that once felt safe, do not. Our kids feel unsafe and scared. Mayor Sticks recently commented, "We're a loving and caring community," and I agree. It's one of my favorite things about Ojai. I have no problem supporting individuals who have been part of this community and need help. I know Tree Bear was really supported here. My art foundation actually did an art project with a man named Russell, who passed away two years ago at our foundation, because he was a brilliant mathematician and he shared his art graphically at our, um, community art foundation. My issue is with the recent influx of people who come to Ojai, hearing of the large allotment of funding we have. That is a completely different situation. Word spreads quickly in the homeless community, and one of the individuals who offered my son drug, my son drugs, is the brother of a woman in the encampment. He doesn't legally reside there, but takes advantage of the services offered, like wearing the clothing given to her. You might have seen him around town in his yellow swimsuit. I am worried the city is more concerned with supporting the homeless in Ojai than ensuring the safety of our local children, and I hope I'm wrong. I really would love my son to not want to be picked up in my car coming home from events. I would like him to continue to walk and enjoy the beauty of our public sidewalks and the main road. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Uh, next we have Renee Roth, then Larry Steingold, and then Anita Cram.
Oh, good evening. Thank you so much. I know this is a really challenging issue and, uh, it's been kicked down the can, the can's been kicked down the road for many, many years. And I'm really glad that you're having to deal with it. I'm sorry, but it's a good thing you got the $12.7 million. I do, um, I do feel we have a missed opportunity here. And, um, I was hoping personally to see a little spreadsheet that says this property and the pluses and the minuses for this property. So there's some analysis that goes into each of the sites. Um, so I'm a little disappointed, I have to say. Um, be, seeing what we have here now and the neighborhood feel we have in the, at this site right now, I know this was considered to be one of the sites, and it's no longer on the list. Um, so I'm just wondering how and what criteria was used to eliminate that one. Um, I just did a quick Zillow on Blant Street properties, the two properties up at the top of the street, uh, selling for eight and a half, uh, 850,000, the empty lot and the house next door, two bedrooms and one bath. Uh, it would be great if the city could have some property next door that would be the homeless, or not homeless, but the new housing and, uh, opportunities for new housing and development in a building on that site right next door and have right down the road, uh, Dignity Move property that could be developed still on this site. I still think this is an opportunity. I don't, I, I think we're all learning to live together, and I think it's a good thing. It's a good thing that we're all learning to live together. The other thing I want to say is I think there's a missed opportunity in working with the school district and with school facilities. Um, I know they're interested in doing housing and low-income housing, and, um, I think we need to work about building that relationship and cementing that relationship and having opportunities where we know our families and our kids are being considered in all these decisions going forward. Um, the last thing is I think we're going to have to at some point have safety net programs where people who are not able to live in these, uh, new facilities are going to be referred for alcohol, drug treatment facilities. There's got to be a safety net place for these people to go. It's a full-house kind of range of options that you're buying into, and I hope you consider adding those in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Next we have Larry Steingold, then Anita Cram, and then Rachel Hunt.
Uh, Larry Steingold, um, 40 years in commercial real estate brokerage, and I'm a little disappointed in our board of realtors and our city manager because, just because an owner says, "No, I won't sell," doesn't mean you can't get the yes. You just ask them what a deal looks like, and then you take the deal and you go back to the buyer, that's us, and you go, "Is this a good deal or not?" And you either kill it or push forward. So if somebody says, "Oh, I don't want to sell for this usage," that's one thing. But saying no is a whole different thing. That being said, uh, Signal Street or South Montgomery, if you block off South Montgomery and leave the only access to this site through South Signal, you secure the site, you protect the neighbors, you protect the values, because you surround the site with landscaping walls, whatever. So there's really no connection. They don't see it, it doesn't exist. And that's essentially what homeless or unhoused are anyway. If you don't see them, they don't exist. Well, here they exist, and we see them, and we need to take care of them. And Signal Street makes sense because you can make it one, one entrance, one access right here. You can take the Public Works building and convert that, and then you can go take Public Works and stick it on Bryant and make a deal there with a garage and a yard and a central industrial area and call it a day so trucks don't have to keep going up and down South Signal because it's residential. Just move the garage somewhere else. Make a deal with the school. Do a joint garage. What difference does it make? They need the money, we've got money. And with this, right now, this, this costs us nothing. We own it, there's no taxes on it. So if we're going to spend a million-two to some number over there on, uh, Ojai Avenue, we can take the million-two to whatever and make a deal with somebody in Bryant. Because the guy on Pearl Streets doesn't, not doing any construction. Maybe there's an opportunity there. Maybe the other Lakers, other acreage, just get hold of Diane Weisman and ask them, "What does it take to make a deal?" And let her come up with an idea. She's got land across from Matilla Huh. There's all these opportunities. But if you're going to go forward, let's do it and get moving. Okay? But South Signal, you're going to find another place for the garage. And you're going to secure it so there's no access to Montgomery, which affects these neighbors. Okay? Just keep it one way in and one way out, which is what essentially we have now, sort of. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next we have Anita Cram, then Rachel Hunt, then Star Child Wavoda.
So I also would like to thank everyone involved for all of their hard work. And I stand in support of the Public Works, uh, piece of property. It has privacy, there are trees. Whether you believe it or not, it is true that there is a healing element to nature. It will provide a sense of security and safety to the people living there. And it's within walking distance to community resources. And on a different note, I would like to ask my fellow community members to stop demonizing the unhoused. Troublemakers come from all walks of life. And in my long years, I think there have been a lot more from wealthy, unruly wealthy people than from people who are living marginally and just trying to get by. I actually owned a condo in another city down the street from what's called an SRO, a single-room occupancy. And, you know, it wasn't a problem. They were part of the neighborhood. I had interesting conversations, met all kinds of people from walks of life. These are people who have, are down on their luck for some reason. You yourself may have a, a family member that you aren't even aware of that's a couple steps away from this same situation. So I just ask you to be a little more thoughtful in this and a little more accepting as a community. And, um, you know, new transients into the community are not a part of this project. That's a whole different problem. We've had people, homeless people or unhoused, coming to Ojai for decades, you know, because it's a wealthy community. It's actually a very diverse community in economics, and we want to maintain that in our community. This is not new. You know, people coming here because there's resources here. So please, be compassionate, and I support Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Uh, next we have Rachel, then Star Child, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Hi. First off, I want to say, um, thank you to St. Francis Challenge and the Help of Ojai for their continued heartfelt service, um, in this area. Second of all, I want to say, well, I'm not going to go numbers. So I just made some bullet points. People talk about discrimination or not in my backyard. I just want to bring out the fact that, what did the Chumash people think and other native tribes when colonizers came here and, um, destroyed their way of life? Also, um, implementing real estate, um, implementing things like being redlined so far back you couldn't even buy houses in Ojai because of discrimination, which somehow, creates this situation because generational wealth. So maybe the time is now for some reconciliation with all of that. Um, last week, the meeting at Tent Town, because thankfully, I would like to say too, I have, um, been given an opportunity by the St. Francis Challenge to actually do some case management, that I, continue, I should say, that I've been doing hours of, countless hours of service, um, in the last six months of this. And I was actually brought to tears, um, last week because of the connections made to access services that have been overlooked for far too long, um, even with the programs that we have here. Personal healings, reconciliations, um, and implantations of accountability and organization, uh, the reintegration, like Betsy, um, talked about, um, who brought a wonderful dinner this evening. Furthermore, I used to live right next to this lot. I was at 416, the view of the mountains and Peciman Hill and stuff. I personally would have been blessed to see this developed there. Um, you know, there could, I could find pros and cons of any situation. I think we all can, and I think we have to look at the positive and look how this could benefit us. Even being across Nordoff, hey, it might be a good social experiment to teach the high schoolers about what real life is like. Um, regards to the drugs and the new homeless people, I actually got involved with this because I started to see transients nine years ago coming to town. I would get to know them and help them reconcile relationships or find places outside of there. And drugs, um, being born and raised here, I was mainly given drugs by people who were wealthy people's sons and daughters, who were going to Oxnard and picking up drugs and bringing it back to town. So I just want to get some of those statements out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, next we have Star Child, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Casey Abbott.
Good evening. I don't really have an opinion on where the homeless shelter, or sorry, the, the tent and camp, sorry. I don't really have an appointment, uh, an opinion on where we put the new housing. But I do want to say one thing, that I think we do need to look out for vulnerable populations around the encampment. It doesn't belong next to a preschool. And the reason why is because I don't think we can protect, uh, preschool kids from seeing violence and from seeing drug use in the encampment. If I'm wrong, then we can choose that location. Uh, but if I'm right, which I think is probably true, um, it needs to be kept away from those vulnerable populations. One thing I do want to ask of the council is to not forward this discussion to the next meeting. I know Rachel's not here, and there's no tie-breaking vote, but housing delayed is housing denied. Winter is coming. We can't wait much longer, and we need to move now. So I would ask, and this may be a big ask, to ask Rachel the way she would vote and then kind of arrange the votes as if Rachel were there. Maybe somebody could abstain. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Star Child. Uh, next we have Jeffrey, and then Casey Abbott, and then Mick Froelich.
Thank you, uh, city councilmen, mayor, citizens. I think this is a difficult decision for our community. I think we have to, though, respect all parts of our community, all neighborhoods. And, um, so what, why, I, I do strongly support of the four, uh, sites we've looked at, the, uh, Signal Street site, because we own the property. And I think I've looked at Dignity Moves in Santa Barbara and elsewhere, and they have it actually in downtown Santa Barbara. I think it's possible to develop this so neighborhoods feel secure and even separated by, uh, trees and so forth. However, I do want to bring up one other issue. It was stated that some of the sites could not be considered because they were in industrial zone. Now, that decision by this board was about the general plan, which actually hasn't even been approved yet. So it was a direction of how the general plan should go. The manager has said, he talked to individual board members, I don't know which ones, that didn't think we should do this. I don't think that's a proper way to do government. This should be brought here, and each board member say, "We shouldn't do those sites." We had apparently several sites on Bryant Place that were in industrial area that were actually in nobody's backyards. So if the city council doesn't want to put it in someone's backyards, they should reconsider that decision. Otherwise- Otherwise, I think I strongly favor putting it on Signal Street. Maybe some of the ideas that Larry had, Stein Gold would work, I don't know. But that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Casey, and then Mick, and then Eva Cristofolo Fernandez.
Just one quick flashback to Item 1H. You could have actually proposed an exception clause to your housing in the district representing in order to take that. You said that could be taken up in a later, that's just a quick comment to add to something, maybe make it easier. I'd like to address the idea of safety concerns. The people who need to be concerned about safety are us, those that live in the camp. We've had rocks thrown at us. We've had tree stakes, six feet long, two inches diameter, with pointed ends toward the tents. I personally have been hit in the head with a rock four times, had rocks thrown at me, multiple rocks, many, many of them, at least seven times. I recently took a deal by Ventura County Prosecutor's Office to plead guilty to disturbing the peace for having been falsely accused of assault with a deadly weapon and brandishing a weapon. I was attacked by some of the children from the rich neighborhoods and arrested and got to spend seven weeks in jail for being these kids' victim. But yes, the real problem is our safety. Your children, I don't think you have to worry about pedophiles. We have none. The one pedophile who's already been kicked out of the, he has multiple problems. He is now wandering around Ojai, has relatives in the area. So continuing program of where they go after they're kicked out of the program is a very, very big concern for everybody in Ojai. Us, you homeowners, everybody, property owners. The Ojai Valley Inn has that concern too, because that guy will disturb anybody, including tourists. Another person was removed who was shooting airsoft pistols out of the tent. And he's also perhaps a drug distributor. And he's not in the program. We're getting down to very few undesirable people at this point, and it kind of brings up a point about the word homeless. It groups people like me, who's just a former business owner that lost his business and his home in the Thomas fire, with drug addicts, people who need some mental help, and people who will not work or work with others. I'm seeking to get my own business going again. This would be a huge launching pad for me, a place to securely save a few things for a very small, very limited business that could succeed and get me financially able to get back to a larger business that is quite financially stable and can employ people. But strongly support your efforts. And I see that the tide is strongly in favor of South Signal. And I doubt that it's a really big concern for Persimmon Hill because nobody goes that way except me. I ride the bike down Creek Road quite often. It's a shortcut to Ventura. And I ride a long way on a bicycle.
Thank you, Casey. Next, we have Mick, and then Eva.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'll be the least favorite person in the room after I speak since my property is the one directly adjacent to the, what you're calling South Signal. I think we should call it what it is, which is Montgomery Street, since that's where the access will be. I'm not sure how many people in this room walk Montgomery Street on a daily basis, but I can tell you it's treacherous. I don't allow my son to walk on that road by himself. So subjecting 30 to 40 disenfranchised people to walking to town on that road would mean the city now has to embrace the cost of sidewalks, handicap access. I encourage everyone to walk the property. My property is a tiered yard. It's very expensive. I've looked into grading it and changing it and making improvements to it. It's insanely expensive, so I can only imagine what the city planner has seen or hasn't seen yet as to what that cost is. We haven't been presented a budget as to what it would require for drainage, not just for a outhouse or bathroom situation, but also for that many people residing in a small space. Safety, I'm not going to address the fact of the residents who are here now, prior to the steward being here. But before that, I've had four calls to the sheriff, two for vandalizing my house, harassing my dog, a person attempted to break in. These were transients that were living in the gorge before they were moved to behind Kent Hall. So to say that the people there are not dangerous, I'm not accusing anyone that's there now. I don't know these people. But there have been instances. We are the direct access to the east side of Ojai, so people do come up from wherever they are, and my house is the first one they get to. And for whatever reason, it embraces trespassing. The reason I'm in favor of the Maricopa Highway location, it doesn't neighbor a single private residence. Yes, there's a preschool. The high school's across the street. Those children are gone before it's dark. Everyone that's in the encampment would be gone during the day as everyone keeps proposing and going about their life. So at night, when there's security, the children will be around this encampment, if you will. The other issue is it's a neighborhood. It's not just the city storage lot. There are homes all down Ventura Street, which is the other side. We keep calling it South Signal. It's really adjacent to Ventura and Montgomery. My neighbor up the road has three children and his father, who has Alzheimer's, who can't, you know, fend for himself. So to subject them to this, as everyone keeps saying, quiet, tranquil lot, yes, it's a quiet, tranquil neighborhood for now. There's no guarantee what happens after the 38 to 40 residents that are here now move along. And long-term, how do we maintain that quiet environment? I think there's no guarantee. So it shouldn't be near any private residence, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick. Eva?
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Eva Cristofolo Fernandez, and I am no longer a resident of Ojai because of my children and I having lost our housing a month ago. But I am still struggling to maintain connections with the community here, which has meant so much to me and which I value greatly. I want to say to the people particularly who keep using children as cover for their own prejudice, that my children and I, since my older one was five and my younger one was in a sling, have gone extensively to build housing for the unhoused communities that were part of the communities where we lived. And I made sure that they never had anything instructed to them other than showing the greatest respect and care for their fellow human beings, because surely none of us is any better than the rest based on circumstances, which can always change very unexpectedly. I find it deeply offensive how often preschools and high schools and children's safety has been mentioned. I really needed to say that because my children have been around other children who were taught by their parents to steer clear of those people. And we always walk by, greet, discuss if we have time. There is so much value in human contact. Most of the people who have hurt me in my life, actually, I think I will change that, 100% of the people who have injured me physically, who have assaulted me, who have done whatever type of wrong that I have experienced in my life are all property owners. I think that the testimony that has come from some of the gentlemen here tonight who have experienced violence from people who have been poorly instructed and have social examples given to them of this type of behavior is, needs to be looked at really closely. As far as locations, I'm sure you all are aware that the people here who do not have respect for other than property will never be happy with your decision. So please make one that helps the most people. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we have some raised hands right now. First, we'll have Greg, followed by Julie Fox, and then Anita. Greg, you have the floor. Greg, you've been unmuted.
I did. Okay. Hello, City Councilman Mayor. I think there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. Somebody mentioned earlier that there should be a spreadsheet, for lack of a better words, an analysis of every location that's being considered, and the pros and cons, costs, logistical issues summarized in bullet point and/or spreadsheet format for each potential location. And on the other side of it, I recently sent an email to the city manager and to each one of the city council members about a property that I own, which is not a vacant lot, which seems to be the only thing that is being considered. But it is a relatively large property at 1.35 acres. It does have some units on it already, and it has garage space that could actually be converted to additional units. And I think that if those type of properties aren't considered, then you're missing out on a lot of potential opportunity. There are big lots with limited development, but some development in and around Ojai that are probably reasonable distances and maybe even in neighborhoods that are more in tune with where the city council is trying to go with this project. So I would ask that you might expand your horizon a little bit and look at those type of properties. I'm sure they would cost a little bit more initially, but when you factor in the ideas that they already have utilities, tour hookups, existing structures that can be utilized, then the costs and the logic of it may well play in their favor. So I'd like you to maybe expand your horizons. I know my property I submitted to you all, and I suspect there are probably some other ones like that that maybe just were bypassed because they weren't vacant lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next, we'll have Julie Fox, followed by Anita, and then Bill Miley. Julie, you have the floor.
Hi. Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking, and I came late to the meeting, so I apologize. I didn't hear everybody. But I want to say there is a lot of misunderstanding about dignity. First of all, they, people need to know about Dignity Moves and what a wonderful organization they are. The community is contained, and they have services onsite, so people are not veering out all the time. They are being helped onsite, on the community. I do want to tell you about a community in Trieste, Italy, that is a great model, and it would be so wonderful if Ojai modeled this. And I will read it to you real quick. Trieste's approach is based on four principles. Patients are citizens deserving dignity and respect. There is great therapeutic value in including them in the city's daily activities. Work with the community creates an inclusive social fabric that welcomes patients, and patients function best when we preserve their freedom and play to their strengths. The central premise of the Trieste model is that mental health treatment should place the suffering person, not his or her disorders, at the center of the healthcare system. In practical terms, this meant that people experiencing mental health challenges should live in the community. Their social inclusion and rights and freedoms as citizens should be respected. More proactively, this has meant that workplaces and social cooperatives for people experiencing these challenges have been set up. The people experiencing these challenges live in the community and are indistinguishable from our citizens. That ultimately, the town produced a number of highly successful anti-stigma campaigns encouraging citizens to live respectfully and alongside people experiencing challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Next, we have Anita, followed by Bill Miley, and then Councilmember Lang. Pardon me, was distracted.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Anita, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. I would just like to say that I don't know if any one of you has ever been treated as an untouchable, as someone who is condemned by their mere presence, who is excluded from being with other people. I've experienced that because I'm not, I am not vaccinated. I have been excluded from several groups because I'm not vaccinated. I am not welcome. And I want to say that these people who are human beings, many of them very intelligent, some of them have had some bad things happen to them. One lady had invested in a cab company, it went under, she became homeless. There's a man who is a former construction worker, maybe even a contractor who's there. There are some really, really smart people in that group. And the man that the lady mentioned earlier, Russell, was a brilliant man. He did not have a place to live. He lived in various locations along the river bottom and was moved on sometimes. He was a friend of mine. At one point, he asked me if he could move in with me. I wasn't allowed to have anybody move in with me, but I let him stay in my house a couple nights, but he snored like mad, and I gave up my bed so he could sleep in my bed. I did not have a good night's sleep, and unfortunately, I did not allow him to continue. I wouldn't, my landlord wouldn't have allowed it anyway. But months later, Russell became very ill, and in time, he died. He did not have a place to live. He was a brilliant man. He was a one of a kind, truly. I am a bit disturbed by the fact that somebody wants to move into an area and people have the right to tell them they can't move into the area. Is that not discrimination? You know what? Life is not easy. The people who have the houses, I know many of them have worked hard and, you know, they have to manage their life so they have their houses, but people who don't have houses, they have had a very hard time, and to make life even more difficult for them, I think, is unconscionable. People have been raped in our society, they've been molested, there's been drug abuse, all those things. That happens in mainstream society, everything from the mansions, to the middle-class homes, to the lower-class homes, to the homeless. So let's not act like we're better than other people, you know? And there are homeless people who don't drink, who don't smoke, who have jobs, who look, who act like so-called mainstream people. There's such a variety in humanity. Let's not point to certain people and say, you are undesirable. We are not, you are not welcome in our neighborhood. Please, let's get on with this. Let's decide on a place and let the people who want to have a home have a home and develop their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Next, we have Bill Miley, followed by Karina, and then Councilmember Lang. Mr. Miley, you have the floor.
Yes, you can hear me.
Yes.
I've considered all four sites, East Side Avenue, Rotary Park, notably our entrances to our city. That's not a good design and problematic for cabin resident needs opportunities for their rehab. Maricopa Highway location across from Nordoff and the senior high school and junior is semi-isolated, but they've got great views. This does not provide location benefits for cabin residents needing various opportunities to grow and stabilize their lives. The South Signal Street Fair Site, Public Works, seems to be an appropriate site. It's centered on many of the city and community functions, which folks need to be involved to regain rehabilitation efforts in gold. In my opinion, a key part, key issue, element, making a cabin village viable and compatible in a community is the caseworker services and village coordination, like what Amy Wise is doing. That's what's important. I found a national nonprofit group that does surveys of homeless unhoused programs. Most they found need more caseworkers. I believe we need more than two caseworkers to fully help 20 to 30 cabin village folks. I support the Public Works site for the cabin village, but I have an additional thought. I assume several of the sites on the Realty Board list, which were removed, were along the Ojai Trail between Fox Street and Fulton Street. Those could be reexamined. The locations are good. It should be one of the better sites that we consider. It should be one of the better sites that we consider as options. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next we have Karina, followed by Councilmember Lang. Karina, you have the floor? Karina, you have the ability to unmute if you're still there. We'll just give you one more moment here. And Karina, we are moving on. Councilmember Lang, you have the floor?
Thank you, Weston. I just wanted to start by saying a big thank you to the Board of Realtors and to our volunteers for your continued engagement and your help with this process. I also want to acknowledge that I've taken the time to read all the public comments that have come in and listened to everyone tonight and especially the neighbors who are concerned. And I just want to second what Betsy Van Light and what others said about the members of our tent town. You know, Betsy's on the ground floor, Betsy and Ruth and our volunteers are there with the community members. And anytime I've been at the tent town, it seems like there really is a community. And that, you know, the whole reason why we started, the why we built the encampment and why we went through this process is because of the initial safety concerns that we had when our unhoused residents were camping on city properties and, you know, and so all of this, every step that we've taken in this process is for, to address the safety concerns. I think it's important that we make a decision tonight. It's my understanding that we run the risk of losing our grant funding because of changes in the state and we're already spending the money, so I think it's important. I am leaning toward and in favor of the, of building the cabin village at the city maintenance yard. And I want to reiterate what others have said, that dignity moves has a model that has proven to work. They are, they work with them for physical health, mental health, any kind of services. They give them a sense of responsibility over the community and over their participation in the community. Ames with St. Francis Challenge has been incredible and, you know, help of Ojai, we have so many things in place already, a structure in place already to make sure that the, that the needs of the unhoused are taken care of while also creating an environment that keeps our neighbors and our residents safe. I know the next agenda item is going to be the ad hoc committee and this is something I'm also in favor of because I think we do need neighbor participation. Regardless of where we build this, I think it's important that we have neighbors involved in that and I'll speak to that in the next thing. But, but in, you know, in Star Child's recommendation, I would give my vote for the city maintenance yard if I were gonna, if I were there in person to vote tonight.
Thank you, Rachel.
Mayor, we have our last comment in-house here, Dave Patrick.
My name's Dave Patrick. I'm a thirteen and a half year resident of South Ventura Street. Some people hearing me speak now will automatically deem me as an evil homeowner. I want to clarify that the lower maintenance yard site is in a neighborhood. I know it's been falsely stated this evening that, hey, not in my neighborhood, put it over there because it's not in a neighborhood. My family and I have lived there for, like I said, almost fourteen years. Prior to, well, let's say two years ago, can't recall really, besides some vehicles passing by, like any noise issues, safety concerns in our, in our quiet area. We live by rules and common codes of conduct. If I don't, I'm called out for it. Since, since our local unhoused community has been concentrated on city's property, previously in the ravine and now in Kent Hall property, I've had an individual trespass onto my property, into my garage, who I had to coerce out. I've had to pull my children inside, close the windows due to yelling, screaming, fighting, shouting of expletives that was never, never occurred previously. I mean, for goodness, I've received letters when I've run my leaf blower too late at night or God forbid on a Sunday because of city ordinance that prohibits that. But at any hours of the day and night, I have now, and my family has been subjected to noises that had not occurred before. So for, for everyone's support of the lower maintenance yard and to make it sound like it's just in the middle of nowhere, unfortunately the property that I've worked hard for, to pay for, to pay taxes on for almost fourteen years stares right at it. It's right outside of my front door. And I urge you to look for some, for a different property. I, I think the Board of Realtors has some more work to do to, to identify alternative properties. I don't at all support the Rotary Park location nor on a main thoroughfare, but I believe that this population deserves easy access to the services they need, to food, to, to services, to medical and transportation, which the lower maintenance yard does not easily provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. One more comment, Nuria Rosa?
Hello, I wasn't originally planning on speaking tonight, actually wasn't necessarily planning on coming to this meeting because we came up from where we're staying now. Like as my mom said, we lost our housing here, which is really depressing because I love this community and I was really happy to be a part of it. But I just want to say the way that the loving community here has been talking about the actual human beings that are from no fault of their own or from circumstances outside of their control or societally put upon them, put in situations that any of us could be put in with, like this one gentleman was talking about from the Thomas Fire. So many people were like, anyway, it's disgusting to me. Also, I just want to say that to, I don't know if any of the people who have been saying this horrible stuff really realize what dignity moves is like people are saying. If you look on their website, I think they kind of cater to the NIMBY vibe because they literally try to make their things look as unobtrusive and clean and that's their whole, like, selling point. And so I really don't think that there's a conflict. They like make it extremely likable to people who are very like conservative in look and the way the neighborhoods look and I really don't see it as a problem in neighborhoods with childrens. If you look on their website, I just don't think that you guys have been looking at their website or their communities. It's well thought out and whatever your ideas of like, oh, these people are dirty and blah blah, that is like a tent city, which I'm not shaming anyone for because that is society's, it's a whole other subject. This is not saying, oh my God, we're gonna have an encampment in your, next to your house. It's like a little, it's like completely blocked off. It's exactly what you guys want. It's lots of walls, y'all love walls, pretty bushes and stuff. It's great for you, like, it's not, I don't know, I don't see the conflict. And yeah, these people deserve dignity and a place to live. I just really think that we should move forward and show ourselves as the loving community that we portray, like try to share ourselves as. I believe in you guys. You can do it. There's a lot of, a lot of hate going around, but stay strong and I think we can find a good solution if we decide quickly because, like they said, this money is in here forever and look at their website, y'all, it's clean, it's clean. You like clean, it's clean. Okay, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Nuria. That's it, Weston? All right, let's take a brief break and then we will come back for discussion. Thank you.
Could, uh, please take your seats and come to quiet. We will move on to discussion, please. Uh, if you could take your seats, please. Don't make me call out your names. Please. Okay, we will, we are ready to move on to discussion. So who would like to begin?
I'll start. So, um, initially, I was supportive of the Signal Street location. But as it occurred to me, there are a lot of sort of infrastructure costs that we're unaware of. We don't, there are no, there's no infrastructure there. So that means water, sewage, electricity. I mean, there's probably some electricity, but there are some deep costs there and we don't really have a sense of what those costs are. Likewise, you know, given its current usage and potentially past usage. A soil study could throw, could throw a complete monkey wrench into what is possible there. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pros and cons and I'm just going to go through this. I'm not in any way dismissing the, um, the pros of Signal Street. I think if there weren't these sort of, um, unknowns, then I would move forward with it immediately. The idea of trees, the idea of seclusion, the idea of being close to services. You know, the idea that we're moving with alternative building materials potentially. You know, in that environment just seems, you know, totally fitting and, and wonderful. My, my major concern is the costs that would come for infrastructure and also the fact that at, there is some potential that a soil study would make it unfeasible. So, uh, you know, my heart still goes for that property. There's no doubt about it. That that's the one that, that I would choose. Hearing what everyone said about the community, we don't need to rehash all of that. I'm throwing all of the fear mongering out. I'm throwing, you know, I'm just not going to try to evaluate that. It just isn't evaluatable. It's someone's opinion, someone's perspective, someone's feeling. And I'm not going to negate it or affirm it. Um, I'm just not going to put it into my decision-making process. That having been said, uh, you know, so it, it could cost us a million dollars. I mean, you know, and I can ask Lindy about this, like, you know, what's the, what's, what's the outside cost? You know, if it's a million dollars and then we still have to repatriate the existing, um, stuff that's there. Either get another property or, or not. So those are the pros and the cons. I will ask Lindy to speak to that. Yeah. So, so, and I mean, you know, the, the idea of needing access and safety for just, just walking on the street and things like that. The plans that are going to have to go into that and the amount of time and energy and thought. So I don't see this as bingo. We made a decision. We move tomorrow. There's still tons to be done. Um, I'm just going to throw this out. Um, Maricopa Highway has everything. You know, it, it's got all of the infrastructure. Uh, it's close to services. You know, it's, it's a big lot. It's 1.6 acres. There can be landscaping. The price is 1.75, but we heard that, you know, maybe that's movable. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Maybe there's ways to get long-term leases. Once again, that would take time as well. But what I'm going to propose is that those two, that we do a feasibility study with those two properties. Because we really haven't done that. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want this to be going on forever and ever and ever. But we need a little bit more detail, especially for me about the Signal Street lot. Like I said, my heart says yes, but then I look at all of the potential things that come with building and the regulations that we're going to have to have. So I would suggest a feasibility study of the two properties. You know, within two weeks. It just gets some costs. Like what does Public Works think it would cost to bring that to a point? Just a guesstimate. So I know I'm gonna, I mean, that would be a question I would ask Lindy. Um, like what, what does that mean?
So I can speak to three of the, three of the four lots and there are definitely pros and cons to all of them. I'm going to take away Rotary Park because it doesn't seem like a real feasible option. So, um, the Public Works yard is not without challenges and we're not even certain what those challenges are right now. We know some of the, the items that will be required. There's a, there's going to be a significant grading operation, for example. There was, there's a very, very large stockpile of dirt and earth that has been exported to that or imported to that location some time ago. So that will have to be dealt with immediately. I don't know, I don't know what the use of the parcel has been over the last 50 years. I don't know if there's soil contamination. We have not gotten to that point yet. I suspect there has been oil changes, uh, perhaps fuel spills. I don't know. But it's something that we would want to do, a soils exploration to see what the quality of that soil is. In all likelihood, it's, it's, it's able to be remedied. It's probably not a deal killer, but it might be expensive. It may be time-consuming. Um, that lot also does not have, it doesn't have any infrastructure there. It's, it's a raw lot with lots of dirt on it. We've got a drainage problem. So there will be an extensive grading operation that needs to happen there. We've got an access point, as many people have mentioned, there's an access point. And I've got the picture up on the screen. This is an interesting slide because the, the specific lot we're talking about is the rectangular one on the west side, fronting Ventura Street. But the access point is at the bottom of the triangle on this, on a separate lot. So it's possible a lot split would be required and a lot merger to carve off that access point and include it into the lot we're talking about. So there's a lot of potential land development issues. We, there's no water there. There's, the, the sewer main is 30 feet deep. There's no fire hydrant. There's no power poles. I, I, and I'm not saying that, that they're not nearby, but they're not to that site. So, um, and then there's, then there's the other challenge of displacing what is already there that we in Public Works use on a daily basis. It's a working, functioning horp yard. So, Ben?
Yeah, I just want to point out that true, I mean, these are things you need to bring to the site, but these are all things that have been contemplated. And, you know, these are things that in the ERF grant, you have funding to address them. And having worked for a utility before, you're, this is not like you're bringing in a line from, you know, this is not a new circuit. This is, this is just installing a new pole, maybe. Uh, maybe a pad mount. I mean, this is not. So I, I, I understand where the director's coming from. Yes, of course, you'd want to do your due diligence, but I just want to say that these, these are not insurmountable issues.
None of these are deal breakers at all. Um, they're just, they're just items that would need to be addressed.
Right.
And then you have some other sites that have this infrastructure already there. So there's just, there's pros and cons to each one of these sites and I totally appreciate that and recognize that. And, and, and we would also want to create some sort of safe pedestrian route to get to the bike trailer to Ojai Avenue. So that would in all likelihood be along Montgomery rather than Signal. So, but again, as Mr. Harvey states, we have funding in the grant. Um, they're just things to do. You know, it's just added things to do.
Right. So, so I think what hasn't come up is a timeline. You know, like what does the, what do these kinds of things take, you know, and is, I think that has to be factored in. Like I said, my heart is with Signal Street, but if, you know, Maricopa Highway is a plug and play, then we should know that, right? I mean, um.
I, I wouldn't characterize it, any of them as plug and, plug and play. I mean, with what, with what's being proposed. And we've got Jeff Gaddis from Dignity Moves on the line and we can definitely bring him into the discussion if you'd like. I, you're, you guys are the decision makers. We can certainly provide you with some additional details, but I, I don't see this as taking six months, a year to prepare the site to, to be developed at all.
How much would you be willing to put on that? No, so my question, my question is, do, do we want to actually, you know, I, I know that we want to make a decision tonight and I want to make a decision tonight too. And I am perfectly willing to say, okay, let's go with Signal Street. But I really would like to know the timeline around that because, you know, we're, we're still sitting here waiting. Um, and even if we have to invest, you know, two weeks or three weeks to get a good sense of what it's actually going to take, that's going to be quicker. You know, than, um, potentially running into problems or not really analyzing what the time is actually going to be. So, you know, I would not probably vote against Signal Street, but I would caution. And plug and play, I'm, I'm simply talking about infrastructure. I'm talking about, you know, the grading is there. I'm talking about all of the, you know, the things that we need, um, water, electricity and sewage, right? That's what I mean by plug and play. It's, it's there. So, um, that's, that's, that's my issue. And, and like I said, I would not vote against Signal Street, but I would vote for a two-week pause to get a complete feasibility study if we could, not a complete, but you know, get a real sense. That having been said, um, that's, that's kind of where I stand. Mayor Potem.
So I got, I have a couple of questions. Uh, so if we do the Montgomery South Signal, where do the current Public Works operations move to?
I'm going to let the director speak more to this, but this, this is a weird spot for us. If you humor the word weird, I know that's kind of been abused lately. And sorry, bad, bad choice. This is an interesting location because it's not, it's underutilized right now. And this has been, for lack of a better term, kind of a graveyard of broken equipment and, and items. The city for a long time, and I'm not really sure why, felt that everything that was broken, even if it was broken and not of value, had to be kept. And so that's where, that's where it resides. So it's just kind of, it's true. It's kind of just a.
So it's more of a cleanup operation than finding.
Yes, a non-toxic, non-toxic junkyard would, would be how I describe it. It's, you know, it's, it's literally what you think. Like there's a tire over there, there's a fender. Why? We don't know. But that's, that's what needs to be done.
Okay. And this doesn't have completely to do with, um, the decision-making on a location, but, um, we're talking about Dignity Moves and I, and I do have a lot of optimism for what they can bring, um, to this project. But I'm wondering about the, you know, timeline for their involvement and, you know, at what point in time are, are, you know, are we done with them or our budget has run out from the, from the, um, grant? And, you know, and, and what do we do at that point in time?
Well, uh, Mayor Potem, if you like, we do have Jeff Gaddis with us on the line. Would you like him to speak to some of these questions? Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Um, we're here with you through the duration and we're going to figure it out. And we put a lot of emphasis in not just the grant money, but making sure that we get the job done. So we'll be there, you know, throughout the completion, even with helping with the timeline that's being spoken about right now. I think we can get clarity on a, on a decent timeline quickly, um, to address that concern. And then just in the feasibility of the site itself, um, we're working with significant barriers in a lot of projects that, um, we're working on and some much more than this site that we're referring to right now. So we have a lot of confidence in the site. Um, and any of the concerns that were raised about the other sites in relationship to this one, I think this one, this particular site really rises to the top of the ones that are being considered and denied. And again, speaking on behalf of Dignity Moves, I don't see any significant barriers here, or concerns, um, that would cause us not to move forward, you know, if you choose to vote on this side.
Can, can I ask a quick question? When you say this site, are you speaking of the Signal Street site?
Yeah.
Which site are you, you, you speaking as the?
Yeah, the, the one that we're, the one that we're referring to right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, but just following up on my question, um, at, you know, is there at a point in time where you, where you're, you know, we're on our own and you're, um, you know, let's say it's two, three, four, five years from now, you're, um, it's now our, it's our project to take care of and figure out. Or are you, when you say you're with us for the duration, are you, are, you know, are you gonna? I think I was kind of assuming that you were saying that, you know, you'd, you'd work on the funding that allowed you to stay with the project as long as you can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll stay with the project itself until it's built and populated for sure. We'll have a punch list in the end to make sure everything is operating and working and in working condition. We will pass it on. We will work with the teams that will be managing, operating the site. And then we typically, that is my role as Vice President of Programs and Partnerships. I stay connected to all the sites and help problem solve with anything that may come up in the future. Jane and I have been talking a lot and she in help of Ojai know they will have me as long as they need me and the city of Ojai will have us as a good partner along the way to make sure that site continues to be a success beyond the build and, and it being populated. So that is my commitment from the organization. Again, that's why they hired me to stay, um, with you to continue to have that relationship beyond the build itself.
Could I have a point of order really quickly? Just a point of order. Um, this seems like we're discussing, we're not discussing sites. We're discussing something else than sites and we have a very full calendar. It's 9:30. I mean, I would like to keep the discussion if. I mean, I would like to keep the discussion, if possible, focused, not what happens after two years, do we run out of money? Um, unless it's directly related to site choice. We have a full calendar. It's nine thirty. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm the only one who's talked, well, Mayor Protem has talked, but if we could keep it focused on site selection, that would be great because I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of where are we going to get the money in two and a half years? That's a discussion to have, but that's not the agenda item.
It's, um, it is related. Um, because we should know what we're doing, uh, before we select a site. And it's one of the big problems I have with the way this project, you know, I, I'm, I, I'm very optimistic that we can, um, you know, succeed with this project, but I'm, you know, very concerned also that, that, you know, we're, we're way ahead of ourselves in terms of, uh, you know, where we are in the process versus where we are in figuring out how we're gonna, um, uh, pay for it. Um, I think that the quicker we move along, the less incentive for the county to say, uh, we should, um, you know, we should jump in and help Ojai accomplish this. Um, and when I say help, I mean, you know, provide funding. Um, so that we're not the only, uh, we're not the only folks with skin in the games in terms of funding, how, uh, everything's going to happen. I mean, we're basically, I mean, I don't see how we're going to avoid having a, a social services department. And we're a tiny little town. Um, so, uh, I think that, um, I have a problem with, so I have that problem. I also have a problem with, you know, none of the sites we have is something anybody, you know, feels great about. The, the ones that we're talking about tonight. Um, I've always thought that both Soul Park and the property across from the Honor Farm, uh, were much better alternatives in terms of how they're going to impact, uh, neighborhoods. I don't want any one of our neighborhoods to shoulder, you know, to shoulder the burden, um, that comes with this project and I, and I don't want to, when I use the term burden, I don't want to be pejorative of the folks, but I, I don't really hear many people saying, I want this in my neighborhood. So, um, we're asking one neighborhood to shoulder the burden for the entire valley. So, you know, one of the things I, I, you know, I think we should have been looking at along the road is, you know, is there a way to address homelessness where we spread locations, um, throughout the community so that we don't have the entire issue in one neighborhood? Um, I mean, I, I've, I've thought for a long time that most of the churches in our valley, well, I'm not going to say most, many of the churches in our valley have significant property that, um, that we could potentially utilize for, you know, tiny homes where somewhat, you know, where a church might be able to take, you know, two or three people in, in a tiny home, you know, just like the types of homes that Dignity Moves has, and then that is a much smaller burden on a neighborhood than, um, than putting, you know, thirty or more people all in one spot. So, uh, I also, you know, I, I just can't bring myself to say that I would vote, you know, I, I, you know, I keep thinking about the idea that, you know, as you're picking someplace else, you're basically picking, okay, well, I'm, I'm picking that it's not going to be in my neighborhood. So I can't bring myself to say that any one of these neighborhoods should take this project on, especially if we haven't, I don't feel like we've exhausted all of our, uh, revenues and I, and I, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how we would attempt to leverage the county to talk to us more seriously about Soul Park, uh, or the Honor Farm. Um, but I think that it's worthwhile to try to do that. Um, but I, you know, I, I think as long as we, we keep the attitude that we're moving forward, I, I won't expect any, uh, you know, devotion of funds to, from the county to help our financial situation out. Um, so, I'm not going to support any of these locations. Um, I think we're doing more, you know, I think what we're proposing is to do more than our share. Um, because our, you know, ten percent of the valley, twenty-five percent of the population is essentially going to be shouldering, you know, as far as I can tell, a hundred percent, as far as the county's concerned. Um, so, you know, it's, 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 uh, it's a nice concept that you're going to take on the whole thing, you know, by yourself, but, you know, is it really fair that the unincorporated area and the county are not, um, participating in a financial way, um, to taking on this project? So those are my comments.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Francina?
Mayor Protem, haven't you learned that life isn't fair? It's not, it's not fair. Okay, and we are in a position to do more than our share. This is a community, when the Bowl, Libby Bowl was in dire straits, somebody contributed a hundred thousand dollars to keep it going. Okay, we're a wealthy community and there are so many unknowns, we can't possibly a, address them all. Um, I am, uh, in, I carefully weighed the pros and cons of all the sites. I'm extremely familiar with the Church Road site because during my period of, of not having my own home, of renting a room, I often ate my dinner there because I wanted privacy. You know, uh, renting a room makes you want to, you know, find a place where you can sit, eat your meal, watch the sunset. And I, um, I went there, I mean, I've half-lived on, on Church Road and I know all the nursery school and I understand those concerns. Um, if it turned out that the South, um, Montgomery, do we call it South Montgomery, South Signal Site, the Public Works Site is not suitable, uh, I would, I would consider looking at, um, the Church Road property. I, I think that, um, if it's done, it would be done in such a way that it could actually be, um, and not a negative for, for the children or the school. And I agree with the people that pointed out, um, you know, the whole characterization of, 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 uh, of this, um, cabin village. Um, the, the negative characterization, I don't see it that way. I feel like once it's up and running, there can be an open house and everybody can come and, and meet the residents. You know, just like you would normally do with any development, you'd have an opportunity to interact with the residents. And the other thing, um, addressing the safety of, of South Montgomery, if, if, if we determine that's the best entrance and exit, we need to do that anyway. That whole street is just bad news and people coming off the bike trail, you know, that, it needs to be addressed. We need safety there for the whole community, not just for, um, the cabin village that could potentially go, go in there. I, I did walk, um, I, I trespassed on the Public Works Yard Two this morning with Dale Hanson, who gave the presentation. And I did see that it, I've never seen so many trolleys in my life. Can we turn those into houses? You know, that's what people do. They take old buses. Yeah, yeah, no, seriously, look online, you'll, people convert, you know? That's a whole other topic. But anyway, um, you're, it seems like you're, you've assured us that everything we see there can be, be moved to another location and cleaned up.
Yeah, and I just want to jump in on something. Whatever we need to do to that location, it's going to be less than one point seven five or whatever the price is of Maricopa Highway. I, I can commit to that for certain, okay?
Yeah.
Even if the owner comes down in price, whatever we have to spend on the lower Public Works Yard, we'll definitely not approach that.
Yeah, oh, and also I would like to assure the, the neighbors that are close by that we'll do our best with landscaping and, and a, a wall or whatever, to, you know, to give them as much, um, so they don't, so they have normal, normal privacy as any development would, would do, you know, just all, um, uh, normal, normal things that you would do if you're a good neighbor. And also, uh, in case, um, people that are still watching it, that's only quarter to ten, it's nothing. Okay, um, there, there is, um, I, I, there's a good neighbor agreement. The whole town should have that good neighbor agreement, that, you know, that, that, the, the cabin village, that the, that the tent village or whatever we call it now, is now, uh, abiding by, those are the rules. And that same rules will apply, um, at the, at the cabin, cabin village. So, um, I think if, uh, so, so I'm, I'm in support of, uh, of this after weighing all the pros and cons. I actually went, when I went out to the, um, to the site by the fire station, it was noon a couple of days ago and three fire engines were heading out. And, you know, anyway, and for that and other reasons, it doesn't seem, um, as, as feasible. Um, you know, and also considering the, the neighbors. Um, yeah, so, so, so Lindy will come back and you'll come back with what? We'll, we'll find out next, I mean, I would like to, uh, move forward, support this site with, with my vote. And then you'll, and it, it's understood that if there are uns-unsurmountable problems, then we will reconsider.
Well, here's, if I could just jump in really quick, and I'm going to put Jeff and Dignity Moves on the spot. You ready, Jeff? So if, if you do decide on a location tonight, Dignity Moves will do a test fit and we'll, and we'll get that to you ASAP. And they can turn those around fairly quickly. So you're going to be able to see what type of configuration is possible and yes. Lindy and I will work, you know, you know how quickly we jumped in the pickleball thing at Soul? That type of speed?
Yeah.
We'll jump on, okay, get some granularity as to rough estimates of, of costs and, and, and any, you know, challenges that may, may be there. But I will tell you that I feel very confident that whatever needs to be done is going to be less than the purchase price of that other lot. I can tell you that.
Um, through the mayor, could I just?
I'm going to make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just want to first say thank you to council, to staff, uh, to community members, to our unhoused task force for working on this for a year. We really have been working on this for a year. And, um, a year ago, the task force, I believe, identified the Public Works Yard as the best site. So I think it's really interesting that we've come full circle and I'm really glad that we did all this legwork and research. Of course, we know that there is no perfect site and we've heard from the neighbors and I feel for you. You know, I took a walk with some of the neighbors around the maintenance yard over the weekend. And yes, there are a lot of, a lot of factors, a lot of considerations. On the other hand, I do think that this is the best solution to this problem. And I think Betsy Van Light brought up a lot of really good points. Um, you know, the unhoused are generally traumatized and stressed from being unhoused. So, and they're not violent. So giving them a home, you know, I mean, imagine if any of us lost our home, we would feel traumatized and stressed. So I think that that's, um, a really important point. Seventy percent of our population in Ojai is housing insecure, another issue to really think about. I mean, that's staggering and, you know, the system is broken. We know that unfettered capitalism makes the rich richer and the poor poorer. And, and I mean, that's, that's a fact. And so this is one thing we can do to help the people at the very bottom. And I, I keep coming back to the F D R quote, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it's whether we provide enough for those who have too little." And I really do think it is our obligation as, as community members. If we don't do anything, if we just leave the, the, uh, Ojai Tent, OTT stands for Ojai Tent Town, thank you. So many initials, um, it's just going to get worse. I mean, that, that is not an option in my mind. Um, this location, it's centrally located, it's near, um, food, it's near transportation, it's near Help of Ojai. And so much gratitude to Help of Ojai for doing all the work that they, they do and will continue to do. Um, and these people are members of our community. Uh, I've gotten to know several people, I know members of our staff and council have gotten to know people. Every story is different. Um, a lot of these thirty-some people are older women and, you know, we're lucky, we have homes, not everybody is that lucky. Um, and I think that Dignity Moves, I've, I've known Jeff for a long time and have gotten to know the model and it's really incredible. It's so inspiring and hopeful and it, and we're not relocating the encampment. We are building something new and beautiful and exciting that can be a model to other communities to show how we take care of people. And I think in terms of the funding, yes, that is a question, although the funding, you know, once we do this, funding is going to open up. That's what, you know, I've heard that from many different sources. So I think that I, I'm ready to move forward with this spot and, um, and get going.
Yeah, just a brief, a brief comment. Um, I, I am also willing to move forward with this spot and cross my fingers that there's nothing that's going to sink it. Um, you know, it was just sort of due diligence, but I also understand the imperative nature of this decision. So as I said, I would never not vote for it. Um, I did want to say though, that, um, as far as, you know, us shouldering the burden, the state has given us one point, has given us twelve point seven million dollars. We are not, we are not shouldering this burden right now and we have two years to bring all of our powers together to either lobby the county or, you know, whatever. I always think, what's the worst thing that could happen? Well, gosh, we might need to take that million that the L. Robler is going to bring in and actually put it towards, you know, some of the unhoused here. So I look at it that way. I look at, we have a million T O T that's probably going to be coming in, wouldn't it be poetic justice? Um, but the point being is we have twelve point seven million from the state right now. The burden is not on Ojai right now. So, um, that having been said, I would support, uh, the Signal Street, uh, Public Works Yard, thank you. Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember?
Can I make one brief comment? Um, Mayor Protem, I really do like your idea of going to the churches and other locations and spreading out, seeing what they can do because we will need that housing as well. Hey, the, you know, the, there's no, uh, you know, there's no reason why we can't do two things at once. We can support this and we can also pursue the, some of the ideas that you proposed. I think those were excellent.
Yeah, so I, I will make a motion and I will agree with Souza that we can, I, we go by these church properties and they're empty. They're acres and they're empty. Um, so that, that is, you know, a, a real idea around repurposing. But that having been said, I will make a motion that we, uh, select the Public Works Yard as our site and move forward with that.
And I'm just going to make one comment just for clarity. For as far back as I can remember, the churches were our homeless program in this community. They, they shouldered it entirely themselves through volunteers from the churches and so, you know, we all should owe it, you know? They, they shouldered it entirely themselves through volunteers from the churches. And so, you know, we all should owe it, you know.
But that was in the wintertime.
That was, yeah, that's fine. Okay, but go, go ahead.
Is there, is there a second?
And they had to leave. I'll second.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Sticks. We have a motion by Councilmember Rule with a second by Councilmember Francina to select the Signal Street Lot, Lower Public Works Yard location for the City of Ojai Cabin Village project. Roll call. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang is absent. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we will move on to item number three. Uh, Ad Hoc Committee for Cabin Village Community Engagement and Communication. Is there a staff report?
Yeah, Mayor, just a very brief staff report on this item. So this is also a, a follow-up from your meeting back in July, the last meeting we had. We were directed, uh, to come back with a communication committee. I was directed to come back with, with an idea for a communication committee. Um, and, and what I decided to do, what you see in your, in your, uh, agenda packet, is I, I went to those people that are already within, um,
Quiet, please. Thank you.
Those that have already been really helping the city and, and me professionally in, with this project. My kitchen cabinet, if you will, um, and, and that's who you, you see on, on this list. And, and the, the idea that, that was recommended by the community is that these are people that can go out to the community, to neighborhoods, to organizations, that can help you spread the word on what we're doing, answer questions, bring back feedback to me so we can respond, uh, you know, more, more nimbly and more quickly. Um, and, and beyond just simply having an FAQ on the website and social media posts and so forth. So, um, we have, uh, five people that I'm proposing. It's Jane Walter, who's the co-executive director of Help of Ojai, Betsy Van Light, who, uh, wears many hats, but, you know, I put down her title here, is the board director, vice president, secretary of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Ruth Miller, who, uh, she proudly pointed out is a member of the unhoused task force. Uh, Bill Miley, Bill told me his name just goes without title. He just, he's Bill Miley. He is. Right. A lot of appreciation for Bill on that. I'm just kidding around. Uh, and Paul Wallett, um, an important addition who I inadvertently left out when this first packet came out, but he, um, is an OTT participant. And that's super exciting for us to have him on this group as well. So that's whom we're recommending. Of course, it's up to you to decide if you want to take that suggestion. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Councilmember, your question?
Did you want to say?
No, do you have a question?
My question is this. Uh, we had several requests that someone from the neighborhood, uh, of the site be on the committee, and I would, uh, like to consider that, you know, with my colleagues. I don't know if it means that there has to be one less, or they can be an addition.
It's up to you. I mean, I think adding, adding somebody from the neighborhood is completely fine.
And, and maybe the neighborhood themselves could pick that person if that would work, or they could meet with you and you can decide.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I would support that as well.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and move to public comment. Um, first we have Ruth Miller and then Les Gardner.
I think Les went home. I think, I can't see him.
That was brought up before because I didn't have a clear idea of what it was. But as I've always said to you, I am willing to do anything you want me to do for this project. In the meantime, I've had a chance to talk to some people, including, and Harvey about it. And I have to say that I am very possibly the most excited person about everything that has already happened and the vision that I see will be happening and having Help of Ojai and supportive services. And, uh, I think it's an excellent idea to be generating that same kind of enthusiasm as well as the communication to our community. And I am at your service.
Thank you, Ruth. Uh, Les went home, we think. Okay, thank you. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we have one raised hand from Councilmember Lang, but I did see Bill Miley raising lower his hand. Mr. Miley, did you want to comment? No raised hand. We'll move on to Councilmember Lang. You have the floor.
Thank you, Weston. Um, I just wanted to voice my support for this. I think it's important for us to have an ad hoc committee. Specifically, you know, we have a lot of questions that were raised tonight and that have been raised in our public comments and any emails that came in, um, about the details of this project. And I think that having this committee is gonna help us to be able to engage with members of the community, um, you know, more effectively. So I think it's important. I also think it's important for community engagement, for transparent communication. You know, these were, these were some of the priorities that we established in the last meeting. Um, so I think it's, it's good. I also like the, uh, Councilmember Francina's, uh, point about including a member of the neighbors, uh, like one of the neighbors, and having the neighbors appoint someone or, or, you know, I, I think we can work out the details of that. But I think it is going to be important to have someone represented who is right there, who is being affected, who's going to be affected by this. And, uh, and yeah, I think, I think this is important. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Rachel.
We do have Mr. Miley's hand raised now. Mr. Miley, you have the floor.
Okay, hi there. You can hear me.
Hi, Bill.
Yes, proceed.
I strongly believe in keeping city residents and the wider community informed about city government challenges, programs, budget issues, and in general, how their government is doing. I want people to feel good about our government. I have a professional background in public health education administration. I worked for the Ventura County Public Health Department for 23 years in the last century. Wow, that's old. And I have been an active citizen, attending many council and planning commission meetings. The way I view efforts to help folks without homes is through strong casework, well-funded, which works on their rehabilitation needs and goals. This also includes focusing on the many, which are universal, opportunities residents of our city experience daily, which give them positive elements of their own and their family lives. One such, one such list has seventeen different opportunity elements that people should be involved with. Here's a couple of examples. Be secure, comfortable, hopeful, be involved, get support from others, and learn. I believe I can help with the cabin, the cabin village communication, community engagement, and understanding. I'd be pleased to be appointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
No more raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to begin? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, just the only thing I was gonna comment on was exactly what, uh, Councilmember Francina brought up and everybody seems to be in favor of, which is that, you know, whatever neighborhood we selected, we would have somebody from that, at least make that, uh, I don't know that somebody from the neighborhood wants to be on this committee, but we should, uh, we should let them know that if they want to place somebody, that we will do that.
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to be added to what's already proposed.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, and I have a brief comment. Um, in, in the spirit of keeping, you know, all sides, you know, part of the conversation, not that I want someone who's adversarial, but perhaps someone who is, um, discouraged by, one, one of the residents who are unhappy, I think would be a, a good addition, someone who could actually look at it with eyes of this is going to affect me adversely, um, would be, you know, someone who's, of course, likable, but, um, you know.
Well, someone who's willing to be civil and
Yeah, but, but I think the ability to point out and have insight into how things are really going to affect the surrounding area would, would also, you know, not a yes person, basically. Not that we have any of those, but if we did.
Okay, and that was, you seconded it.
I did.
Seconded, yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. I, I
I seconded it. I seconded it.
Did you?
Yes.
Souza seconded it.
You seconded. And, um, I would also just like to say a big thank you to everyone who volunteered to be on this committee because, uh, we're just really grateful to you. So thank you for doing whatever it takes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yeah.
If I may ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
We've talked about the neighborhood group. Would we like to add a, is there a name for this group in, in the motion?
Let's suggest that the city manager select a neighbor who meets the criteria set out by the city.
Good idea. Okay, so go ahead and we'll have a roll call now, please.
Yes, motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitman with a second by Councilmember Francina to proceed with staff recommendations and direct the city manager to have the ability to choose an additional member. Roll call. Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang absent. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yep.
Don't forget, there's still public comment.
Oh, a second. Thank you for reminding me. And I apologize for not, um, we do, we have public comments from Andy Gilman and Jerry Treebear Odell. Andy Gilman still here?
I, I can relate to you guys more than ever in the sense of, you know, running for office where everybody wants to talk to you about politics all day long, and it's exhausting sometimes, but it's also good. And I, I wanted to say, um, to Souza and Betsy, thank you for your service. And I really appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone's service. That, that was the main thing. And I hope that as we go into this election, no matter who wins, we're in this very unique situation where it seems to me we have a vibrant OUSD board, and we have so many nonprofits that are wanting to collaborate and bring things to the city. And it feels like there's ten wonderful collaborations going on. And I've been thinking about that all day, is if we're gonna do anything good, it's through collaborating. So I hope we can leave this election cycle again, whoever ends up winning, without these craters of discontent left because of the way the election happened. So let's just stick to the issues and, and keep working together, being as civil as we can, and, and come to the next city council, ready to do some great work with a lot of goodwill. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, Treebear?
Hi, everyone. I'm, uh, happy to be here and, uh, and thank you for having me. And I did a little homework here, and I have a proposal I'd like to present. Uh, I need to make copies of this. It's, uh, a very detailed, it involves, uh, a mission statement, passion, and, and reasonings and of, of all the community's concerns I share. And, uh, the tiny homes, I have an eco-ethical, um, very wide range of eco-compatible tiny homes versions, like, uh, on wheels, there's ADUs, granny flats, uh, the, the cabin bungalows, the Cobb, uh, dwellings, and the list goes on, on. And, uh, I just love to share my, uh, my passion, my mission statement, and, and my vision here, and, and me being here for nearly a quarter century in Ojai. And, um, I am really transparent and very friendly, approachable. My struggles, uh, here, I burnt out on the Thomas fire and then, then struggles through the pandemic and things, we lose things. I lo, lost my truck. I became handicapped. And then I have cancer on top of it all. And that is healing well with my treatment and how I take care of myself. But, uh, it's been challenging for my healing with, with the, uh, toxic energies of, of the, the, the drug addictions and alcoholism, the nicotine, and the trailer batteries and electronic components and everything. And I, I've been working with the crew, the, the PACT that has a state, uh, contract that subcontract the crew. And, and, uh, so along with all the other entities here in Ojai, I'm, um, actually, uh, presenting, uh, another entity called the Habitat Eco Rangers that is already familiar with the crew, is familiar with Treebear, and working with them. So, um, as, uh, I see, uh, how we can save, preserve funding and direct it more to specific needs and spend it more wisely by not, uh, we, not bringing in any more outside enterprise. Let's do what we can with who we are, with what we have right here. Uh, we can perform miracles if we just have this collaborative, cooperative. And, uh, you know, I'm offering myself up. And, and I'll be happy to answer questions and, uh, make adjustments. And, and, uh, I'll be happy to roll with you guys on, and all, all and every issues that, uh, that share our concerns as Drastor's family community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Treebear.
Um, I have a quick question.
We have
For Treebear? Yeah, yeah. And also for city staff. Treebear, perhaps if you could share that, um, at the front desk, we can, they can make copies and distribute it to us so that we can take a look at it. I appreciate your, your work and your thought for that. So, um, if we could do that, and, and I, I think we can. So the front desk with Bridget Mara, perhaps, and
Do you have a printer handy?
We do, actually. You could just leave with the city clerk right now if you wanted to. We could facilitate that, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo Councilmember Rule that, uh, thank you, Treebear. Much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Received, and this will be included in materials received at the dais in our public comments link on the website.
Thank you. Any
We'll keep it safe. We'll keep it safe. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other comments online?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one raised hand that, from Anita. Anita, you have the floor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to suggest for this group, I know some people might think it's crazy, but I think it would be if we're talking about collaborating with the community of, of unhoused people, that we have one or two unhoused members of that community on that group that you're talking about. Because they have firsthand experience of what's going on there. And I also would suggest the lady from the St. Francis group, who's, you know, the coordinator there. Perhaps she'd be in that group as well. But I think also women and men, women have a different perspective and different experiences than men do. So I would like to see their input and participation in that group as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, all right, let's, uh,
We do have, uh, can we, Mayor? I just want to make sure Anita knows that we do have a participant that lives in the, um,
OTT.
In Tent Town, Ojai Tent Town, OTT. We have a diverse group, Anita, women and men, mostly women, actually.
Yeah, mostly women.
Yeah. I think we're covered.
Okay, all right. Well, let's move on to item number five, the 2024 Annual Citywide Pavement Rehab Project Award of Contracts. Uh, do we have a staff report?
Where are we?
We do. And you're still here. Thank you, Lindy.
I am still here.
Or number five.
So, um, so the item before you tonight, you can see the agenda report is multi, uh, multiple recommendations here. I tried to group everything together in one staff report. So, um, this is to award our 2024 annual paving project, and this is year one of our new PMP. It's a very ambitious project, as you can see by the dollar amount. It's, we got three bids, and the low bid was $4 million, a little four million and change. And we've got three, all, all good, very close, and we're selecting Toro, who is the low bid, which is what we have to do. So that's the first item and the first recommendation on this staff report. The second is to award a contract for the construction management of this project. And that is to Phoenix Engineering, and they have also done the design of this and, um, been working very closely with them on all of our paving projects. They were the CM for last year's as well. The third item is to, what, what we're trying to last year's as well. The third item is to, what we're trying to do is, we got a little bit behind this year because of football, because of unhoused, because of all of the other work that we're doing. So, I really want to just keep this process moving along. So, as an action tonight, I'm asking the city council to also award a contract for the design of next year's. So, we can just keep on going. Where our goal is to get a project out every year. So, that's, that's, excuse me, recommendation number three. Part of, part of this project, a street in this particular project that we're doing this year is Drown Avenue, which, as you will remember, about a year and a half ago, we installed speed cushions. So, we need to remove the cushions because we're going to be paving the street. And the recommendation at this point is not to reinstall the cushions. They, the preliminary data illustrates that the traffic didn't really slow down significantly. It slowed down about two miles per hour. And then, we are also going to be talking at a later meeting on other measures to, for traffic control and speed control. So, and then the fifth item on here is just authorize an additional appropriation. And all of this is, the additional appropriation is coming out of Measure C, which is the TOT, which, which is exactly what its intent was, is to, for paving projects and infrastructure. So, I can answer any questions. And there's a, there's a map here. I have, I also have a slide, so something that I wanted to illustrate too. You can see that the dollar amount of this project versus last year's, we've got $4 million this year. Last year, it was under three, so it was like two and a half. We also, this project is also three times as large as last year's project. And the goal when we, when we adopted, when you adopted our five-year PMP, was to touch every street in the city in a five-year period. That's a very ambitious program. And we would probably want to discuss a slowdown of that, if you will, at a future meeting, because this dollar amount is probably not sort of sustainable over a five-year period, and maybe we stretch that a little bit, but we can, we'll be coming back with you with some suggestions and options on that. So, next slide? So, I just wanted, I just wanted to illustrate a couple of things. So, so this is, this is the map that's in your packet right now that you're looking at. So, these are the streets in the 2024 PMP. The project we did last year was, we call it the 2022, it was the last year of a 12-year program. And then, we adopted this new one. So, just click one more time. And, and so those are the streets. The blue streets are the streets we did last year. The magenta streets are the streets in this year's program. So, you can see the volume difference. We're doing about eight miles of streets this year as opposed to about three left. So, it's a very ambitious, large paving project. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to show you that slide, just so you can sort of see the cost difference, et cetera. So, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I want to ask. May I ask a question, Lindy? Can you speak a little more about these two temporary speed cushions? You're saying that they had no effect, little effect?
They had little effect. They had little effect on the reduction in terms of speed. About two to three miles per hour. The 85th percentile went from about 29 to 25, 26.
Well, my first thought is, maybe they weren't good enough. I mean, maybe, because when I go on streets that have serious speed bumps, there's just no way that you would go fast on them.
And, and that's a possibility. These are the temporary speed cushions and not a permanent speed. Yeah, they are.
I haven't seen them. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I slow down.
All right.
Right.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I guess, having, you know, experienced this at various times on the street I live on, what can we tell the public about the right way to go about encouraging the city to do, I know we got the schedule in mind, but, you know, there's a couple of places that I can think of, thankfully not my street right now, but that are just, you know, just awful, that I, you know, that they really need to be taken care of. So, how do community members communicate to the city, you know, please take a look at this spot, and can you, can you shuffle the schedule so that we get this taken care of?
So, what I would say to that, because obviously I hear that frequently, and we may even hear it from one of our speakers who left in the room tonight, I believe. I got a little preview of it. But, but as mentioned, I think that what we need to do is we need to sort of relook at our PMP. We're year one of a five-year plan, but it's not, it's not super logical to people looking at. For one, we're trying to maintain streets at a maintenance level and not have to rebuild streets. So, we're balancing between, between repairing failed streets, which is what you're speaking about, I'm sure, and I see them, and I know which streets they are, and they're out in 2028, and some of them. You know, what we try to do is balance and try to sprinkle some streets that need a reconstruction versus streets that are just in maintenance. But I would, I would suggest, over the course of the next year or so, so we're going to be, the plan is to move forward and design our 2025, this is 2024, and design our 2025 streets as, as our PMP stands. However, I think it might behoove us to somehow split that project in half because of the price tag. I would expect the price tag for next year's would be around this amount or more. There's going to be inflation. And then, we, we perhaps start adding some of these streets that are in this failed condition. And that's, I mean, that's truly a technical term. It's in, it's a PCI, it's in a fail, it's a failed category. So, start inserting some of those. I have a list of the streets of, that I hear from people on, and I'm sure I could gather and compile that list to a much, a much greater list. And part of this is because we've had so much, so, so many years of deferred maintenance, so, so. So, and that's one of the reasons. And Mr. Harvey and I spoke about this, and I'm like, that's a high dollar amount for this, for this paving project, but I really think we should move forward with it. The quicker we can get these streets paved, the better situation will be, for sure. So, all this to say, I would recommend, over the course of, say, the next three to six months, we would look at our PMP and start adding some of these other streets.
All right, we'll move on to, thank you, Lindy. We'll move on to public comment. First, we have Steve Quilice, and then Larry Steingold.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I'm Steve Quilice. And I had a Zoom meeting with the city attorney recently. I'm not sure if he recognized me. He should now because I have a tie on again. I spoke with Lindy just before the meeting and asked for one small thing to be added to this, this year's paving, which is along a portion of Kuyama on the south side, just east of Del Norte. It's been partially, it's been partially paved, I think, by the county, and they seem to think that a part of that roadbed belongs in the city, but it's full of bad potholes. So, that's something I would ask if maybe we could look at adding to the program. On the other side, I think I have something where we can save a little money. I'm just looking, spreading the map, making it a bigger, and I see there's a couple of things in my neighborhood, particularly the block of Mallory Way, which was actually paved at the same time as my block of West Eucalyptus in 2017. It's still in fine shape. Doesn't need to be done this year, in my humble opinion. I would also question whether we need to do all of Foothill Road. I walk Foothill Road a lot, and it's in pretty good shape. There are some patches, but like my block of West Eucalyptus, we went a long time where the only smooth part of the road was the patches. Foothill Road right now looks like it's in pretty good shape. Walking it, I don't see people bumping as they drive it, and so you might consider cutting that back as well. But there's a couple of places to save money, and a humble request to add some for us poor pedestrians that walk all over the city and try to avoid potholes. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for waiting.
Sure.
So, I would like to speak to that. So, oh, or, you can go back, whatever. So, so.
Yeah, come back. We like you. Come here.
So, first off, I want to say that the condition of streets in this town, being in good condition and being smooth, it's all relative, because we have so many streets that are not that in that condition. So, what we're, we're constantly trying to do is balance a street that is, for example, we are probably only doing a slurry, a slurry seat, not a major reconstruction, not a grind, not going down, but just keeping it in a maintenance mode, which is our goal. That would be our ultimate long-term goal, is, is start maintaining our streets, and then we don't have to completely dig them out down to the base and start all over and rebuild the road. So, this is exactly what I am trying to, it seems super, super counterintuitive. We see these roads that are crumbling, and we don't want to necessarily maintain the ones that look okay. We want to keep them in that, in that condition.
So, there are different degrees of magenta in the map?
I have a big set of plans in every single street, and even multiple sections in a given street have different treatments that are required.
By the way, I would like to compliment your Public Works Director. I've known her from another life, but for years, we were in a situation here where we built roads, we resurfaced whatever roads that would last for 15 years, and we did that every 30 years. So, we had 15 good years and 15 really bad years for a lot of our roads. I see that changing, and I compliment Lindy on bringing that to us. Thank you.
And also, just one other point to make, is we have done quite a bit of pouring of the, the street sections to see what it really looks like under. So, we have done a lot of that as well.
Thank you, Lindy. Thank you, Steve. Larry?
I feel your pain. I bike around the town. I see the roads. Speed bumps undrowned do work. They just need to be a little longer and a little flat, whatever, because it does slow. They need to be every 500 feet apart, but that's okay. I, every city in the country has a problem, infrastructure. They're all, we're running around playing whack-a-mole. Fix the road, fix this, then the, we get the housing issue. That's a million dollars. We have no idea. Take it from the TOT, and we have spent about a half million dollars from security. I don't know what we've spent so far on the unhoused encampment. I don't have a clue. A million dollars. Why don't we bite the bullet and raise the TOT to pay for the roads so we can get them all up to 15 years, and then you can reduce the TOT? And just take the money, because we're getting a million visitors a year. They're coming more. They're paying $1,000 a night here, and we're not getting enough to support the roads. We're just not. Okay? So, we can raise the sales tax, which hits me, or we raise the TOT that takes visitors. And until the economy changes and the hotels start feeling the pain, then you can reduce the tax. As long as it's not hurting the business, then let's get all the money from the tourists we can get. Because, well, we might as well. They've got the money. We want it. We need it. We need it for the homeless, the unhoused. We need it for the cops, because that's going to want more, and we need it for the roads and infrastructure. So, just put it on the table and raise the TOT to where it's going to be. Because without the money, we're stuck. We're going to be nickel and diming the roads for the next 30 years. And like they said, 15 years, 30 years, come on. I mean, please. It's not that difficult to raise the money, to just take the money to do. So, that's my proposal, but which, anyway. But the roads are getting done. Lindy's, the Public Works is doing wonderful service with what they got. But Scotch tape and glue is not going to keep the city together.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments online?
Yes, Mayor, we have two raised hands. First, we'll have Bill Miley, followed by Councilmember Lang. Mr. Miley, go ahead.
Okay, hi. 25 miles per hour. With almost universal interest and support among folks who pay attention to our government, we want 25 miles an hour citywide. And we talked about reducing the speed maintains the pavement longer. If, and I believe I follow, I have followed what's going, going on in Drown Street, and if those temporary humps, they seem to work, because Lindy said the average speed now is down to 25, which is what we want. So, I would hope that after they're paved, and, you know, paving allows people to go faster, that the humps go back. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we'll have Councilmember Lang. Councilmember Lang, you have the floor?
All right, thank you. I'm still with you all. So, I am in favor of moving forward with this. I think street paving is really important, and, and I think the, I like seeing all the magenta lines, especially the one on Sunset. I know that's a, that's one that we need to have done. I also did talk with the city manager about different odd options for pavement and different types of pavement, including ones that might be more environmentally friendly. And, and he clarified some things for me about the availability of different pavement types, and, and we discussed the possibility of, at another time, bringing up a, you know, a pilot project or a demonstration project of some kind using different materials. And so, that's something I'd be interested in as well. And then, also, with regard to the Drown speed humps or the speed cushions, I'm also aware that we had a speed study done before the cushions were in, after the cushions were in. And so, I would love to, when we do bring up that topic in a future agenda item, I would love to revisit this. But, but I am so thank you, thankful to Lindy and to our staff, to, you know, to all of, all who are moving forward with these efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lang, and thank you for staying up all night, pretty much.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to start?
Okay. As far as when the motion comes forward, I would like to amend number four. I'm fine with you removing the two temporary speed cushions, to, you know, so you can do your paving project. But I think the neighbors are going to wonder what happens to the, you know, I think there needs to be some kind of communication, and possibly, it seems like some people are saying, I don't live on that street, so I'm not sure, but it seems there is perception that there was some slowing down of traffic, and maybe there is, you know, I don't know that we should decide right now whether they're never going to go back.
Can I offer one?
Yeah.
Living in that neighborhood, I think that people who like to speed are taking different roads now, to avoid the speed bumps.
There's that. You know, interestingly enough, because the data showed that there were some spikes on Drown, and I'm, because I would have expected the same, that we would have seen, you know, the volume decrease, and we didn't see that, which is interesting. So. Yeah. So, if, if people are taking a different street, they just put speed bumps there to, that's, or do, there has to be, we can't. That's, I mean, or do, there has to be, we can't, don't think, speed is not like the rain. It's in our control. There are studies, there are ways, we have to figure out, you know, we have a responsibility for the health and safety of residents to figure out how to reduce the speed. We can't just, we can't give up. And, and of course, I'm hoping that, uh, in, that we're still going to bring back the 25 safe lives, you know, citywide. I, I'll discuss that with you. But, um, and then my other question, um, Lindy, is, um, can you educate me again about, uh, street striping? Um, after you pave, you go back and restripe the street? So if there is going to be, uh, any changes, um, for example, on Grand Avenue, do we need to have a discussion about that? You know, so there can be, uh, bike lanes, or what, what?
We, because we've touched on, we've talked about Grand Avenue a lot. Um, and I think what we, we should probably do, this is a paving project, let's get the paving done, and we can, we're not planning on restriping for bike lanes, but it's definitely worth, worthy of a discussion, and a much larger discussion on how we want Grand to look.
Uh huh. Um. But you're not automatically do, doing the striping as soon as the paving's done?
No, no.
I, I really would like to have that discussion.
And, and we can't, we're months away from having Grand done. I mean, the process is going to take a couple of months.
Behind the podium by then.
Oh.
I'll, but, but I'll be here.
But we discussed, we discussed implementing complete streets on Grand as well. So those are conversations that we have yet to have, which we should.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because, well, we'll have an opportunity to discuss them when, when we go back to the motorcycle.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's all related, it's all related, okay.
Councilmember Rule? Yep.
I, I, I'd make a motion, if, um, people are ready. I will just make a motion that we, um, approve all five of these recommendations.
Can we amend it to, can, to, to make official this pilot project that, uh, Rachel men- mentioned?
Sure.
Well, um, if I could just jump in, this is a, a, a bid that we're awarding. So I would say no, because, um, but I'm sincere in wanting to have that discussion with the council. I will bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion, and you second it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, Mayor Protem, any comments? Okay, and I'd just like, once again, to thank our Public Works Director. Thank you so much, Lindy, for all the hard work. And, and just to clarify for the public, um, you know, the, this maintenance was deferred for many, many years by previous councils, which is why we're catching up. And, um, that's just the reality, and money went different places back then. So now we're putting it here, and, um, we're really thankful to get it done. And thank you, uh, Steve Quilice, for bringing those, um, you know, what we can add, where we can save. Appreciate that. Um, so, let's go ahead.
I just want to say quickly that, um, when I said there were a couple of places that I thought were really bad, Mr. Quilice named one of them. Um, and the other one I would say is really horrible is, uh, where Libby in general, but especially where it hits Del Oro. This is just true. Um, but I appreciate that you explain why we don't just go do all the worst parts first, because by protecting those, um, streets that are in reasonable shape, then they don't get to that condition, so.
And that's the goal, that's always the goal. We're not quite there 100%, but we're getting it.
It is great to have a plan. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Rule with a second by Councilmember Francina to proceed with all five listed staff recommendations of item five tonight. Roll call. Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang absent, motion passes.
Wonderful. Okay, well, let's move on to council member reports. Anyone have anything to report?
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, well, I wanted to, you know, clarify something. I went to one of the school district meetings, and a comment was made that they held their, you know, their public workshops, and that, um, the city didn't, you know, express any thoughts about the, um, housing project that they're looking at. And, um, just, you know, so the public knows, it's not necessarily a good idea for a council member to speak on something that will eventually come up on our calendar, or, or could come up on our calendar. But more importantly than that, I know that I personally, and I know that Ben, since he's been here, I mean, we've, we've had a dialogue, and I know Ben has talked to others of us about the idea that, you know, we're, we're aware that the school district is planning to do something. What exactly that is, we're not 100% sure. But, um, the idea of collaborating with them, if we can find mutual goals, uh, and mutual benefit, has been discussed, um, and, and I know unless Ben is not telling me the truth, and he has been to the new superintendent there, you know, a couple of times to talk about the idea that, you know, one, we'd like to have a joint meeting so we can discuss, you know, what the plans are and how we can be involved. And, you know, and, and number two, that, you know, we're, we're in, we're interested that what they want to do with workforce housing might fit into a city plan for workforce housing. Um, but it, you know, what, what Ben let me know following his meeting is that the school district is interested, but they weren't ready to have that conversation. I'll also say that I've, I've met with, um, Atticus Reyes a couple of times, um, to talk, and, you know, just very broad, he's, he's certainly very open, um, to, you know, and I think also, uh, Atticus in particular is very interested in that the project fits community benefit. So, um, now that's not really a traditional report, but I, I did want to correct the fact that we are, um, very much interested and involved.
Thank you for that, correcting that perception. And just to follow up on that, Atticus and I have spoken and met several times over the last few years, and, and he has consistently said, we'd like to collaborate, as I have, it's just about the right timing. So seems like that's coming, so that's good news. Um, any other council member reports?
Um, yeah, I know I brought this up at the last council meeting, but, um, broadband to Ojai is coming quicker than we might think. We're waiting right now for the, um, find out about a grant from the, uh, PCUC uh, to Ventura County, and from there, uh, probably it will go through VCOG, but we are next in line to get the, uh, the fiber because it will go through unincorporated areas, Miners Oaks and Oakview, that are, um, at disadvantage, they're disadvantaged, and the percentage of people who have access to broadband um, is much lower than, for instance, uh, Simi Valley or Moore Park. Um, so we went to the top of the list because, uh, that is one of the state's, uh, highest priorities, is to serve the underserved. So we're going to be moving forward on that much more quickly than we thought was going to happen. Um, and it is a year, years-long project, uh, and we need, and, and I've talked to the city manager about this, and he will be stepping in and overseeing it, because there will be funds allocated. How and what, we don't yet know, but we're going to need to have, um, some, uh, strong city oversight on this if we want to get, uh, fiber optic, um, to all of our, to all of our residents. And that starts soon. I mean, the fire has been lit because the money is coming. So just wanted to give you an update on that one.
Thank you. Uh, great exhibit at the museum, Ojai Studio Artists, so go see it. That's some beautiful art.
So I got one other thing to report. I, uh, went, I was invited to be on a panel at the Independent Cities Association meeting in San Diego, and, um, we presented on the Becker Development Agreement, and the, kind of the theme was talking about how you can take, um, that, that there are pathways to get from being in the HCD doghouse and be, being faced with builder's remedy and having, you know, a project, you know, potentially, um, pushed on you that didn't have all the advantages, and, and, and to get to a place where you have a win-win, which is what I think we eventually did with the, um, Becker Development Agreement. He, he was able to develop his properties, and we were able to maximize the affordable housing that came out of that project.
Uh, city managers' report?
No report.
Okay, any future agenda items? We've got a few coming up already.
Yes, I just would say, we, we, through our city clerk, we keep a pretty robust, uh, working agenda document, which I know he'll be sending out to you. I will consult with the city clerk on some things mentioned this evening, and if we've, no, sorry, it's late, if we forget to include an item, please remind us, and we'll throw it on there. That is a public document.
Yeah.
Oh, and it's subject to change.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Yeah. Um, when the, the principal at Nordoff Stok talked about the parking drop-off, um, how do we respond to that?
So we're, we're aware of this situation, and we have a potential remedy, and we will bring that back to the city council. We're in discussions not only with the school, but with Caltrans, and so we're, we're on that.
Okay, so that will come back?
Yes.
And then, um, we've been discussing, uh, the extent, the bike trail extension, and I know that's, but.
Also related to ATP?
Yeah, yeah, but I, and, and I'll talk to you about that, because I, I did bump into a former Public Works Director at the Von's Parking Lot, and I, all my frozen food thawed out, but we talked for a long time about, it was so hot, it was nude. But it was worth the conversation because there are plans somewhere in the files for extending the trail. Just want people to know that we're, we're aware of the need, and it's going to, sooner or later, it'll get done. And then, um, uh, the, I don't know if this is, uh, I, I just want to mention, we've had at least one letter, you know, the Y intersection is very complicated, and every time I drive it, I wonder why there is that, that weird thing where, uh, it has the two arrows, right and left in the middle. There's a left turn, and then there's a right turn, and in the middle of that is a left and right turn. And the only thing that does is get impatient drivers to cut, to cut in front of you. Do you know what I'm talking about? If not, I'll show it to you tomorrow.
You're, you're going to show me, I think?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and it just complicates what transpires at that intersection, and it makes it, there's so much bicycle activity that, you know, people are crossing, and there's so much happening, there's kids, that the, if we can do, get Caltrans to, there's, I don't see any reason for that, because it just funnels into one lane right away. Yeah, okay, that's all I have right now that I can talk about publicly.
All right, well, thank you all for a productive and collaborative and thoughtful meeting, and we are adjourned.
Yeah, thank you.